My apologies to the public for the late start. We're still getting used to Zoom matters. Ms. Cook, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Derrick?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Dr. Mahalkinen?
Here.
Mayor Houston?
Here.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Here.
Dr. Marquez?
Here.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, for tonight, we do not have someone here to do our invocation. So I'm going to just ask some of our audience and our people on the Zoom, if we could take just a few seconds to, for whatever personal prayer or other thoughts that you might want to have. Thank you. We will pick up with our pledges of allegiance at our next meeting. So this evening, we have a number of people for Citizen Comment Council. We have more than 10. We actually have 15. Do you want to keep it at our 30 minutes? Or may we extend the time for the three minutes times 15 people?
I would extend.
Please extend.
Got three.
I'm okay with extending.
Okay, so we will extend our timeframe as we often do. And I'm going to read the Citizen Comment information, which has changed a little bit. But the City Council welcomes written and oral comments from citizens at regular meetings. Citizens who wish to participate in our 30-minute Citizen Comment period are now asked to sign in earlier in the day, which gives the City Clerk's office time to prepare those comments because they are going to be read by a member of our staff. Speakers have the opportunity to speak one, to speak during the time period, and they must observe the three-minute time limit. And I don't need to talk about the lighting device. We will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner, in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal affronts, profanity, or threats of violence. And as I've said before, this is the people's house. I expect everyone to be polite. So I will be calling up each name. And then we have a staff member who's actually going to read those comments. That staff member is being timed. And so at three minutes, that person will need to stop reading. Our first Citizen Comment participant is Linda Alexander.
Good evening, Council. Daily Heather, City Clerk's Office. I was born in Houston and have lived in several large cities and a few smaller ones. Moved to San Marcos with one of the major local employers over 49 years ago. I've raised two children in San Marcos, graduated from Southwest Texas State University, and am always will, and always will be, an active community volunteer and a longtime supporter of the San Marcos Police Department and its dedicated police officers. I have followed the site and release issue for the last several months and researched its use in several cities and states and believe San Marcos is not ready to adopt the CNR ordinance yet. I do, however, as a result of my research, support further investigation into its purpose, implementation, and consequences. I feel strongly that the City Council should be careful not to impose a site and release ordinance on our police officers that will effectively take away their discretion to use other means of law enforcement if they feel CNR is not appropriate. Furthermore, I feel that if we mandate the CNR policy, we may be causing our citizens possible victimization or retaliation for criminals and criminal activity. For example, if we permit CNR in lieu of arrest for some of the thefts or illegal possession of stolen items or worthless checks under a specific value, how can the harmed citizen be made whole? It may be inadvertently creating situations for repeated criminal activity, perhaps involving the same citizens, if the offender feels there is no real consequence. Another result in the site and release policy can be the high rate of which offenders fail to appear for their scheduled court date, which was as high as 40% in one Texas county between 2009 and 2012, compared to a 15.3% failure to appear rate for offenders during the same period who were booked and released. It appears that some of our City Council members appear to have personal agendas as to why they are anxious to vote for ordinance without more study and research into cities who have tried to implement CNR and are not happy with it or choosing not to implement it. There is also a very vocal organization named Mono Omega who is pushing site and release as an ordinance rather than even considering further study on research. It seems obvious from my observations and their comments at community meetings I've attended that they are primarily interested in students who are caught with illegal possession of illegal amounts of marijuana. My primary concern is that we should always show trust in our police officers to uphold the law and give them the authority to take whatever actions they deem necessary to protect and serve our law-abiding citizens. When we take that discretion away and mandate through an ordinance that they must CNR low-levels of criminal activity, we're effectively trying their hands, or tying their hands and taking away their effective enforcement of the law. This has been shown in other cities who have experimented with site and release and found it to be a mistake. If you vote to make the city ordinance, you will be ignoring the safety and protection of our citizens by potentially allowing offenders to become repeat offenders against law-abiding citizens with only minor warnings. Example, repeated theft of personal property to pay for illegal drug use. Another example brought up by a recent council meeting, two offenders, one local citizen, another living in nearby jurisdiction, that results in the local offender being cited and released while the other offender is handed over to nearby jurisdiction and arrested for the same offense. Depending on the ethnicity of the arrested offender, perceived discrimination can result.
Time is up.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next participant, I'm sorry. The next person who sent us in something to be read is Crystal Benavides.
This is Tammy Cook in the City Clerk's Office. I'll be reading Crystal Benavides' comments. Dear Council members, my name is Crystal Benavides. I'm a San Marcos native, homeowner, mother, community volunteer, taxpayer, Notary Public, HOA Board Member, and self-employed Realtor. I've grown to love this town very much. I continue to stay here and encourage others to follow suit. I'm writing this comment to express my viewpoints on why I'm strongly against the site and release ordinance. I know many in favor of this ordinance solely focus on the marijuana aspect of this and say it's a victimless crime. But as a Secretary of Park North, HOA, and condo owner, I'm speaking out to say that we, in fact, have 62 unit owners that were affected and still deal with the stigma and fear it has caused our residential community. We were burdened with two murders here in August 2018 and February 2019. Both were confirmed to be marijuana-related. We have spent a large portion of money to add electric meter and cameras to help ease our members along with more fencing and implementing our security measures. This still can't take away the fear that we live with every night since we heard that gunshot and sirens so close to home. Out of the last 17 murders in San Marcos, nine were marijuana-related. Majority of marijuana comes from Mexico and includes drug cartels, human trafficking, and hostage situations. Victims are used to transport drugs as a payment for their way into the U.S. As leaders of our city, please do not encourage this activity. We are going to drive that type of business to come here. Marijuana possession between two to four ounces is, in my opinion, and the opinion of many law enforcement officers and members of the public, more than personal consumption. Majority of this quantity of marijuana is for the sale and distribution for a profit. If any type of marijuana absolutely must be included in this site and release program, please limit it to under two ounces. The officers currently reported approximately 300 cases of diversion already implemented by destroying the marijuana on camera. This is a policy that they have had in place to handle these types of cases. Please open your hearts and hear our concerns in regards to this issue. The identification portion of this proposed ordinance is very troublesome. As a Notary Public, identification is a big portion of holding my oath to office. I have to be sure without a reasonable doubt that the person signing before me is who they say they are. This is done to protect the public and to ensure fraud is not occurring. When I read the portion of allowing school IDs or other forms of picture IDs that are not government or state-issued and do not contain an issue date and expiration date, and/or allowing utility bills, et cetera, as a means of identification, it makes me feel that you are now taking law into your own hands as a superseding state law, which requires anyone over the age of 18 to have identification. This could also leave room for fake identifications to be created. There's no reason a person living or going to school in this city or county is not capable of obtaining the proper documentation. Many of my clients that contact me for a notarization or to purchase property are not legal citizens and are still able to get a government-issued ID called a matricula consular. If this cannot be done, then others have the ability to get the identification card here in the U.S. should not have any problem in obtaining one. The proposed site and release ordinance does not include all the other cities in the county. This agenda should be led by the county as a united front. It also would allow the county to be prepared and to discuss and implement a diversion program. At this point, this is not being created, and it seems you're putting the cart before the horse. The county's still in the discussion phase because it'll take a complete overhaul to implement this program. They currently do not have the manpower to keep up with this additional citations. They are overloaded in their current workload as it is. Current workers will need to work overtime and will need to hire more employees. When a person issued a site and release ticket, doesn't show up for court. Yes?
Check your timer.
I think you're correct. Yes, we are up.
Okay. The next person who sent in something for Citizen Comment is Sylvia Sanchez.
I write to you to voice concern about the decision councils making concerning site and release and ordinance 2020-18. The state authorized this type of release in 2007 to help with shell populations. Another important benefit is to allow that those that allegedly committed crime avoid the harshness of arrest and conviction on their record when coupled with this county site endeavor program and other programs the county uses. Having said that, I do not see any type of limit placed on how many times an eligible resident is allowed to commit a crime and avoid an arrest. Mistaking an opportunity to rectify at once is understandable. More than once may be considered akin to condoning behavior. Furthermore, it may be assumed that the 40% who failed to respond to a citation, failed to appear, are not as concerned about rectifying their mistake. A warrant arises, and that person is then arrested at some point. Current ordinance without a limit could result in endless repetition of the cycle of reporting the benefit of no arrest to an eligible resident that continues criminal behavior. There must be a limit. A second concern is a comment made by the city attorney at the October 15, 2019, City Council meeting about a confidential memo sent to the council concerning legal issues and unintended consequences. At a criminal justice meeting dated July 16, 2019, there is an entry where the city attorney states that the current wording in the draft could have various unintended violations of the state laws and open parties to possible civil suits. And the council assures San Marcos taxpayers and citizens that the proposed ordinance 2020-18 will not open parties to civil lawsuits or result in violation of state laws. Lastly, is the struggle I saw in two public City Council meetings, 1015, 2019, and 332020, involving officers who realize loss of discretion directed in the ordinance could lead to confusion and unintended consequences. The ordinance in Section 2 is comprised of two paragraphs. The two paragraphs contradict each other. In the paragraph at the bottom of Page 1, the ordinance gives officers the discretion as authorized in state law. The next paragraph reduces that discretion to only six reasons for arrest. The state law affords an officer discretion not only for those items enumerated in ordinance 2020-18. I do not believe an ordinance can reduce discretion authorized by state law. I think counsel for the time and consideration.
Okay, the next person in line who sent in written comments for Citizen Comment, Anna Carbajal.
To the City Council of San Marcos, I understand the site and release ordinance 2020-18 will have its first reading on April 7, 2020. I am running to oppose this ordinance. I've been a resident of San Marcos for over nine years. I was born and raised here. My family is very involved in our community. We have invested in this community. My family owns several buildings in the San Marcos community along with a historical residence. We are no strangers here. I have a family here. I want to keep that family safe. Counsel, we want San Marcos to be safe. Your ultimate duty is public safety. Failure to maintain order in our community will not yield safety in our public. I believe the site and release ordinance 2020-18 will give people, will give more people the opportunity to commit crimes. While I do agree that some people may be a good candidate for just a citation, others are not. They continue to commit crimes because they do not care. They also realize that they will get off pretty easily if they continue to steal what is not theirs from others. I ask that you vote no to the passage of this site and release ordinance 2020-18. Let the officers decide how they will handle these crimes as we have always allowed. As a community member, I want you to take care of my family. Passing this ordinance means that my family means nothing to you. If you are my elected official, do the right thing and vote no to this ordinance. Victims in the San Marcos community deserve better. I want my two children, who were born and raised in San Marcos and who attend the San Marcos ISD, to feel safe and to know they will not fall victim to defendants who just don't care.
Okay, and the next person sending in comments to be read is Brian Garcia.
I've been a Democrat all my life. I have always believed in giving a hand up and not a handout. I believe the site and release ordinance 2020-18 is a handout. This handout should not be given to people who refuse to follow the law. It is not hard to be a law-abiding citizen. I believe people who refuse to follow the law should be punished accordingly, whether they have money or don't have money. I also support our local law enforcement. I believe they should have the ultimate discretion to decide how they want to handle the defendant. It is up to the courts to determine if they should provide the defendant with an option to get this off his or her record or not, if they are deserving of it. I think people need to work hard to root themselves. If they are just given this handout, there is no work on their part. They are not going to be held accountable. They are not going to show up to court. They will just keep committing crimes over and over because they know they will not suffer much consequence. I do not think that the council, as an elected body, should make law enforcement decisions. Those decisions should be left to the very people trained, hired, and prepared to do the law enforcement tasks. We all need to stay in our lanes. This lane, counsel, is not yours. You should continue to legislate and make laws and allow the officers to retain their discretion. Therefore, I oppose the site and release ordinance. I do not agree that you should pass that ordinance. I would, I would hope you would consider this response in your decision-making. You have all been elected by the people to keep victims, law-abiding citizens whole. You should not pass this ordinance, support your law enforcement.
Next will be written comments from Christina Zamora.
To the City Council of San Marcos, my husband, the late Aginado Zamora, and I lived through the civil rights movements of the 60s through 90s in our efforts to desegregate the schools, create single-member districts, and fight the discrimination of our time. My husband was viewed as a threat and a troublemaker by many in our community for many years. A decade later, after the desegregation suit was won, did many in the community begin to have respect for my husband and I for what we fought for in our community? The injustices we lived through, and time has taught us that, yes, the doors had to be opened for many in our community. We later saw that many walked through and achieved great things with the education they achieved. An open door was only but a step that led to success. Commitment and dedication, study, hard work, and personal sacrifices led many the rest of the way. So we arrive at the ordinance 2020-18. Yes, we wish to open the door as it should be. As we saw in the system of education, not every child walked through the door. Some were unable and others unwilling to do what was necessary to get a degree, start a career, and achieve their dream. This is the reality that time has allowed us to see. This ordinance is similar in that opportunities for correcting a mistake should apply to all that are eligible. But considerations should be given to the reality that some will overcome with such an opportunity, and for those, the struggles is just and right. Others will choose the opposite. In reforming the system, there must be a balance between public safety for all citizens, the rights of victims, and the role of law enforcement. Society expects that its citizens will follow the law, and if they don't, consequences will follow. In my view, this ordinance is more about achieving a guaranteed outcome, which leads to avoidance of an arrest for those who choose to continually break laws. Is the guaranteed outcome meant to condition offenders to avoid systems? Works when the desired effect occurs spontaneously and not because it is forced? The desired effect here is to give the opportunity for an offender to fix the mistake, learn from the mistake, and not repeat the mistake. How do we enforce the consequences of repeating mistakes if not by limiting the application of sight to the first offense? I oppose ordinance 2020-18.
Next will be a statement by Nina Arnina Stanfield.
In response to the site and release ordinance with the first reading occurring on April 7, 2020, I am writing to oppose the passage of this ordinance. The ordinance will cause the following problems. One, if restitution can be recovered at all, restitution to victims is not immediate, and it causes victims great inconvenience to try and recover it. Two, repeat offenders will only be cited. There is no fear of arrest. They will continue to commit the crimes because there is little to no consequence. Three, failure to appear rate, and on citation-only offenses is 40%. Most perpetrators do not show up to respond to his or her citation. Number four, 40% failure to appear rate ensures 40% of the victims will not be able to seek restitution until the offender is even located again, if at all. Five, when issuing citation by ordinance, there is no positive or certain identification on those defendants. No booking in jail, no photograph, and no fingerprints. Perpetrators can lie about his or her identity. Number six, limits discretion of officers, which should not happen. I ask that you vote no to the passage of the site and release ordinance. No other city has done this, and there are clear reasons why. Trust your officers. Let them do the job that you're paying them to do. Keep our community safe and support your police officers. Those that do the crime must pay for their actions. Perpetrators must be held accountable. Agreeing to such an ordinance will greatly affect victims and will place perpetrators at unfair advantage to continue to prey on the innocent. Respectfully, you understand.
Thank you. Our next statement is from Naomi Narvise.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council members. My hope is that each of you are doing well in spirit and health. I appreciate the work you are doing to keep our citizens informed. As you may know, my constant endeavor is to advocate for limited government in the lives of law-abiding citizens and safety for us and our posterity. For this reason, I find myself writing to you to address Agenda Item Number 18 regarding ordinance 2020-18, increased use of site and release, according to the memo sent to you by Chase Dapp, Public Safety Officer, detailing the results of a January meeting at the Committee on Criminal Justice Home. According to that memo, number one, the CJC did not agree that an ordinance is the answer. Number two, there was no unanimous consent regarding the violations or offenses that should be considered, and with all honesty, they kicked the can back to you. This is an indication that they do not want the responsibility to fall onto them for any poor decisions made. That would hurt the community. Number three, the committee did not support the language. Instead, it appears they support the officers using discretion. Reading that, I'm taken back that if Mono Omega is mentioned in the memo, Mono Omega's opinions or allegations should not be considered or supported. This organization is anti-law and anti-police. Spread misinformation, advocate for the release of criminal aliens, and now want to influence you to support handcuffing our officers to their agenda. They are not the face of our community and do not represent the majority of San Marcos citizens. I urge you to reject this ordinance and instead continue to work with our SMPD leadership and engage more community citizens to bring sensible recommendations that will protect our citizens and community. Offenses classified as A, B, or C misdemeanors are committed by individuals who go on to committing more serious crimes. The victims must not be forgotten. Law-abiding citizens should not have to worry about being around individuals who cause them bodily harm, having their valuables stolen, criminal trespass, harassment, indecent exposure, and the many other crimes that end up costly individuals, mental, physical, and property harm. Please remember that this would affect each of you and your loved ones as well. You were elected to be leaders and make the right decisions for our community. Reject Agenda Item 18 and support our San Marcos police officers in keeping them safe in all regards as well.
Next statement is by, and I'm sorry, I don't know his name exactly. It's Rolf Strabhar, I believe.
Dear Mayor Houston and City Council members, I know that tonight's meeting, you'll be taking the first of two votes on a proposed site and release ordinance. I want to voice my enthusiastic support for this ordinance, one that can reduce unnecessary incarcerations of low-level offenses that inordinately affect our fellow citizens of color, disrupting their lives, potentially affecting their employment, and creating unnecessary trauma for both those arrested and their friends and families. I also want to thank Council members Mark Rocky Moore, Maxwell Baker, Melissa Derrick, and Hoka Marquez for the support you showed for the ordinance last month. And I hope that support continues tonight. I would invite Mayor Jane Houston alongside Council members Ed Mahalkinen and Saul Gonzalez to join your colleagues in support for the ordinance. Thank you for your service and for your time listening to this message.
Our next statement is from Jay Stiles.
Mayor and Council, the current health process is devastating by itself, but it has also engendered a financial crisis that will seriously damage our communities. It is important that we deal with these circumstances vigorously and in consideration of the monetary impact to us all. San Marcos gets a large portion of its revenues from sales tax rebates, hotel occupancy taxes, and property taxes. Sales tax inflows will be very significantly reduced with the outlet malls and many other businesses closed or seriously curtailed. This and a large reduction in hotel occupancy tax inflows will make a large shortfall of revenue a certainty. Does our city have contingency plans to deal with this? And if not, is the city now preparing contingency plans based on our current conditions and further plans that can be triggered if the crisis deepens more? It would be comforting to hear what plans there are for cutting expenses, even if it means a reduction of services, delaying projects, or even canceling them. The city made a difficult but good decision to put on hold salary increase for city workers, but I am dismayed that the city has announced it will go to the credit markets to borrow more than $50 million if the council votes to move forward at a meeting scheduled for June 5. The debt proposal announcement included, "The city presently proposes to provide for the payment of the certificates of obligation by the levy of ad valorem taxes within the limits prescribed by law." The following information is required to be provided by the city. Excludes $215,180,000 in principal amount of outstanding debt obligations the city has designated as self-supporting in which the city reasonably expects to pay from revenue sources other than ad valorem taxes, provided, however, that in the event that such self-supporting revenue sources are insufficient to pay debt service, the city is obligated to levy ad valorem taxes to pay such debt obligations. We are facing drastically reduced revenue, which could potentially affect our ability to service our debt. This in turn may require raising our ad valorem property taxes, and we are now aiming to add to our debt again based on raising our property taxes to pay for it. But our property taxes are already very high, and valuations are likely to fall due to this crisis. Any additional debt is ill-advised at this time and needs to be carefully scrutinized with the aim to hold the total amount to a bare minimum. San Marcos must live within its means. Thank you.
Our next statement is from Lisa Marie Capoletta.
Your agenda should be only focusing on global pandemic. Since you placed site and release on the agenda, here goes. For several months, site and release has been a hot topic with racial discrimination as the focal point. And I've been up there talking about the sidewalk and abuse of power. Site and release will not be effective unless we take an examination of Burt, who often thinks he's the emperor of San Marcos versus the city manager. I think it's time to tell my story. Of all the public speakers on this issue over the past several months, have you ever heard of the city manager posting a police officer in front of someone's house for three days in a row, all day, for hours a day, and harass any person who tries to take a photo of their yard being butchered after a secret meeting Burt had with some neighbors on my block, breaking his promise for neighborhood meetings, wasting taxpayer time, intimidating landowners and residents? Have you had the city repeatedly trespassed knocking on your door to sign documents that only the landowner is authorized to sign, and refusing to cease and desist after months of requests to refrain from trespassing on my front porch, banging on my front door? Or have you been the target of your neighbors filing false reports against you when video footage from three cameras verifies who was really trespassing and attempting to resort to physical violence? Officers can make discretion in the field. It's Burt's abuse of authority I'm concerned with. Site and release does not come to terms with the fact that following bad orders is not a great position for our law enforcement personnel. My other concern is that the way that the situation was conducted on St. Patrick's Day, how police were used by a city manager in small businesses downtown. Why did the city not go through the Chamber of Commerce? Why were small businesses downtown targeted versus those on IH35? Sending a memo out 6:02 PM regarding a 5:00 PM order is not in good form when it's enforced with the San Marcos Police Department. Let's work together as a community, not pitting law enforcement against people trying to live peacefully in their homes or run a small business downtown. Thank you for your time. God bless San Marcos.
The next item comes from Sarah Lee Underwood Myers.
Who protects protecting us from the drug users and drug dealers in San Marcos? Vote no on this agenda item today. Do not give any excuses for users and dealers to not go to jail. Dare to stand up and make the difference in our neighborhoods. Sarah Lee.
Our next item is from Dana McCullough.
I would like to speak for people who are having trouble paying rent due to being laid off and having trouble assessing an appointment website or telephone.[1640.08] laid off and having trouble assessing an appointment website or tell. I know a person who was laid off from a local restaurant who can't get through to pay her rent, and who also will probably have to wait a long time for the stimulus checks since she was not a bank account and will have to wait for a check. Her apartment is telling her if she doesn't pay $400 right now, which she does not have, she will have to pay late fees. It would be very helpful if apartments do not take action for a set period of time defined by city council. Thank you.
Our next item is from Selena Henderson.
I'm writing to speak against the proposed site and release ordinance. As a citizen of San Marcos and a mother of three teenage children, my concerns are genuine, and I hope that my expression does not adversely impact their validity. While no other city in Texas has passed site and release as an ordinance, other cities and other states have, and we should take heed of the unintended consequences. In Los Angeles, San Francisco, Seattle, and other cities with site and release ordinances, leniency on low-level crimes has crippled the ability of law enforcement to do anything about those crimes. Businesses struggle, crime increases, and the most vulnerable individuals are preyed upon. San Marcos Police Department will tell you that we already have a problem with organized crime from other cities taking advantage of our location on the IH35 corridor and our large population of inexperienced students. In Los Angeles, out-of-state organized crime rings are paying people, LA residents, to shoplift up to the site and release eligible amount. Then they take the goods out of the state and sell them. How much of the city's income comes from sales tax collected by the outlet malls located on IH35? When it's cheaper for them to close them than continue to get ripped off, how would the city recoup the loss of that revenue? The passing of this ordinance will negatively affect every business owner in the city, not just retail establishments. It is a Class C misdemeanor for any underage person to be in a bar. However, the ordinance states that a rent or utility bill may be used for personal identification. Who will TAVC hold responsible when SMPD can't remove the underage person from the bar? Moreover, is this a time of economic uncertainty that the time to pass an ordinance certain to burden the business community? If this ordinance passes, individual citizens will be just as affected as businesses, and it is most vulnerable in the community who will suffer most. Desperate people will be most enticed to participate in site and release eligible offenses for a quick payday for organized crime. Opponents of the ordinance contend that those cited and released will still be held accountable for their crimes in court. So what will happen to those with numerous citations who can't afford to pay restitution? What could have been a night in jail and a hard lesson learned will lead instead of more injuries, long-term consequences? I'm not a callous person. I understand the havoc one night in jail can wreak on a person's life and not trying to discredit or make light of anyone's experiences. My brother has been in jail for the past several weeks for offenses that would be eligible for site and release under the ordinance. Although his crimes were victimless, had he been released, he would still be exploiting my mother, a retired schoolteacher, and a widow on a very fixed income. Suffice it is to say, I'm very familiar with the behavior of addicts. If they get a citation for stealing one person's lawnmower, they will just go on to the next, nor do they steal from places they are likely to be caught rather than from those who are just likely to take recourse against them. How would this ordinance affect those in our community who would rather not call the cops when they are the victims? Where is the empathy for them? Supporters of this ordinance argue that the purpose of this ordinance is to prevent people from becoming victims of the justice system. But who's looking out for the victims of these low-level offenses? Warriorism is a classy misdemeanor. When a woman catches a peeping tom watching her undress through the bedroom window, how is she supposed to feel safe knowing the perpetrator may come back for something much more egregious? The word "only" in Section 2 of the ordinance completely strips officers of the discretion, and time is up.
Okay, and the last person on our list for this evening is by Lita Hicks.
The city of San Marcos has a chance to protect constitutional rights of its community members by ensuring they will not be unduly arrested and punished with imprisonment before a court's official ruling by enacting the site and release ordinance. List of citation eligible offenses was approved at the state level 10 years ago. There has been more than enough time for the San Marcos Police Department to make much needed changes to lower the number of people being arrested for these offenses. Continued arrests for these citations of eligible offenses have contributed in part to the historic overcrowding of our county jail. This is why we must mandate the uniform use of site and release today. More than half of the Texas Criminal Justice Coalition survey respondents reported an annual income of less than $10,000 before being arrested, and four in five reported an income of less than $30,000. Unnecessary jail stays exacerbate individuals' final struggles, driving women deeper into poverty. This stat was one of several in Texas's Apple Seeds, April 2019 report, how Texas counties could save millions of dollars by safely deporting people from jail. The report notes just how financially devastating and necessary jail time may be for the individual, the city, and the county. A police officer's job is not to determine the guilt of an individual. It is not the city council's job to determine the guilt of an individual. Only the judge can decide who's guilty. The opponents of the ordinance are more concerned with immediate punishment through the arrest of someone who has been accused but not yet found guilty by a judge than they are about our constitutional right to be treated as innocent until proven guilty. Even the argument that has been brought forth by opponents to the ordinance concerning restitution is disturbing. Restitution is not something the city council or even the police can legally address. The only one who can legally address it is a judge, and every person who is cited will have to appear before one. Arresting someone who may be forced to stay in jail due to inability to pay bail is prematurely going out punishment to someone who has been accused but may not be guilty. It can lead to the illegal detainment of innocent people resulting in a dead or prison according to our Texas Constitution. An officer should be guided on how to avoid any possibility of these illegal detentions. According to the same 2019 report, failure to appear often happens because people do not have transportation or people are not provided clear instructions on when and where to report. When people are provided with clear and simple instructions and texted before their appearance date, it can improve court appearances by up to 22% according to the report. But again, court appearance concerns are not for the city council or the police to make a judgment on. It is the judge and the local court's job to improve communications with defendants and decide on adequate punishment, not the community and not the officers. I ask that the city council protect the constitutional rights of the community members by ensuring that they will not be unduly arrested, punished with imprisonment by enacting the site and release ordinance today.
Okay, and that's all of them? Is that correct, Ms. Cook?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you all for doing what you do. We're back on. At least we've got all the council members on. I think we have no internet down here at City Hall, but we're going to make all this work. We're going to postpone Item 1 for just a little bit to see if we can get internet back. I will go now to the consent agenda. I would like to pull Item 2A minutes. Miss Tammy's still waiting on me for those. So that's the pull and not approve this evening. Does anybody else have anything else to pull from the consent agenda which goes from Item 2 all the way through 17?
Mayor, I would like to pull Item 15.
That would be Mr. Baker pulling Item 15. And anyone else have anything to pull? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Items 2, B, and C, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, and 17.
Removed.
Motion by Mr. Rocky Moore, seconded by Mr. Baker. Ms. Cook, would you do a roll call vote for us, please?
Dr. Mahakinen? I'll come back around. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Derrick?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Dr. Mahakinen?
I think he's going to need to take that phone off hook.
Unmute on the phone?
And take it off hook, probably.
Can you give me a thumbs up that you approved? We have video from him, but no audio.
Okay, let's just, we'll move on. We have six.
We have six to zero. Okay. All right, and then we are going to go to 15, Mr. Baker. And consider approval of Resolution 2020-80R approving a fourth amendment to the term sheet attached to Resolution 2014-143R regarding the advisability of the improvement in the Whisper Public Improvement District and declaring an effective date.
I'll apologize for having a train in my background. Should we wait to see if...
Mr. Baker, I didn't realize I was on mute. I need a motion for approval and then we can discuss.
Oh, right.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Derrick. Mr. Baker?
So, really, I just wanted to take this opportunity with this Whisper PID to ask about the 50,000 square foot building. When I was looking through the contract, you know, it recommended or suggested that that would be included as part of the PID, but I wanted to make sure that there were sustainability elements required for that building. Or to see to what extent we can negotiate for those.
I'm trying to see if Melissa Nell is on.
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out which button's on, all I needed to push. So, Mr. Baker, could you restate your question exactly what you're asking about the square foot, the 50 square foot building?
Right, so I was hoping that since we are extending the contract for this, that we could at this time also make sure that that 50,000 square foot building has sustainability measures incorporated into it.
Okay, at this time, I don't know the specifics about any sustainability measures for the square foot building that I'd be happy to look into that and get back to you.
Okay. Mayor, this is Roberto, City Manager.
Yes, go ahead.
Baker, we would be more than happy to take a look at that. Keep in mind that this is an existing provision on an item that was negotiated in this contract that spans several years back. I don't know to what extent we could bring up the issue about the sustainability. It's certainly something that we would be more than happy to approach the developer and work with them on. I'm just not sure to what extent we could require anything along those lines, but we don't mind at all exploring that possibility.
So, on that front, I was kind of curious because maybe I just glossed through it or didn't see it very clearly. What is the reason for all of these extensions that we've seen dating back to 2014?
Ms. Seal, do you want to address that?
I know some of the most recent extensions were weather-related. I know there's multiple extensions needed. I don't know if Shannon could elaborate on any extensions that she may be aware of. I know that I read in some of the amendments and extensions that they weren't weather-related, but I don't believe all of the extensions were related to that.
At our last meeting when we discussed this, I'm going to fill some time while we're waiting on someone else, I seem to recall that there were some cables that the developer was trying to get moved or maybe lowered, and those took forever because it was multiple entities, and that was a substantial part of the delay, and that is at their entrance.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. When this item is over, I've been at the meeting the whole time, so I would like to have my vote recorded for the consent agenda if that's already happened.
Sure, and your vote would be yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, we'll record a 7-0 on that. Thank you, and I'm glad that we've got you fully back.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other information about the delays with Whisper? I know some of them, I just don't remember them all, because we did discuss that the last time we talked about this. I don't remember the last time, but we did talk about it.
Mayor Houston, I would be happy to follow up with the detail regarding all of the delays.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to adopt. Mr. Lombreras is going to determine what sustainability items there may be in that 50,000 square foot building. It's entirely possible that there are a number of them, and we're just unaware of them at this time, but Mr. Lombreras is going to check into that for us. So are there any further questions? If not, Ms. Cook, if you'll call roll for the vote.
Yes, I'll start with you, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Derrick?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
It's 7 to 0, it's approved 7 to 0.
Okay, council, are you okay if we continue? Has our internet come back on?
It has not. I'm still waiting.
Okay. Council, are you okay if we skip over Item 18, site and release for the moment, work on a couple of things that we don't need video presentation for, and maybe give the cable company a few more minutes to get us back on?
Yes, that's fine.
I'm seeing one yes from Max Seal, I heard a yes from Ed, I'm seeing, okay, so we're good. So, Item 19, Ms. Cook, if you will read the caption for this one, please.
Yes, ma'am. Consider approval of Ordinance 2020-19 requiring a landlord to provide notice of a proposed eviction action prior to issuing an actual notice to vacate and provide tenants a 90-day period to cure any delinquency as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, creating an offense and penalty providing for adoption of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading and providing an effective date.
Move on.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Derrick. I'm sorry, who was the second?
I think it was Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second from Dr. Mahakinen. Who is our subject matter expert on this one? Is it Mr. Costantino? Because I can start and you can correct me, or we can let you go ahead and go with this, or I'll just start.
Go ahead, start, Mary. I'll fill in any blanks that come up or questions.
And if I'm wrong, just say so. It's my understanding that this does not relieve anyone of their obligation to pay rent. The city government cannot do that. We are extending the time that they have to pay for it, and just my statement, we do expect anyone who can pay their rent, we want you to go ahead and do that. Depending on who your landlord is, please understand that that may be their income that they're relying on for this month. So if you can pay your rent, my personal opinion is if y'all would please do that. Mr. Costantino, would you give us any further explanation and also give us an update on the Texas Supreme Court, please, sir?
Let me start with the Texas Supreme Court first. On Monday of this week, the Texas Supreme Court extended its previous order. It issued an order postponing or suspending any eviction proceedings from moving forward in any court in Texas through April the 19th. On Monday, they extended that through the end of April, so there's the update on that. What this ordinance does, as you stated, it requires a landlord to give a written notice to a tenant who hasn't paid the rent that they have 90 days to do so before they could be required to vacate the premises.
Okay, and we originally, some folks were talking about 60 days, some were talking about 90, and what we did was we put 90 on here just to make sure that people understood what might be passed. I didn't want to have 60 on here, and then we changed it to 90, and that comes as a surprise. We certainly could change it to 60, we could change it to 75, we can change this, but I just wanted for the public to know what the max would be. Do we have information on what is happening in Hayes County regarding eviction?
Bert, do you have anything to add on that? Or perhaps Jay Staff?
Let me see if Chief Staff is on, that he can give us any update. I know that there was already some effort in terms of not conducting the eviction hearings, but let me see if Chief Staff can give us an update.
I will add this, there shouldn't be anything going on because of the Supreme Court's order. I think there were some early indications even before the Texas Supreme Court issued its first order from our local JPs that they were going to hold those in abeyance, but now we have an order from the highest court in Texas requiring that, so I think that should apply statewide, not just in Hayes County.
I understand that, but what was the deadline or what was the date for our local JPs? What date had they indicated that they would not do evictions from now until that date?
Perhaps Jay Staff had that date. I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't recall there being a date. I thought it was, you know, as we get through this pandemic issue, but I will start to research that and verify that for you.
Okay, Mr. Costantino, my point is that our local JPs may have set a date further into the future than the April 30th. I know they can't make it less than what the Supreme Court says, but my thought was it might be further into the future. So, they're going to do what they're going to do. I'd just like to make a statement regarding the landlords, and I'm not going to presume to tell people totally how to handle this, but I just want to note that my late husband who had 13 rental properties was generally willing to work with tenants when needed because it takes time and usually money to do a turn. You've got to find another renter, you've got to go through and clean, paint, do whatever it is you're going to do, and working with a renter is usually beneficial in the long run because you're likely to lose a month's rent anyway just because of the time it takes to turn that unit. So I just wanted to get that out there. Statement by anybody else?
Mayor, I have one.
I think Ms. Derrick has her hand raised as well.
Okay, and I cannot see that because I'm having to use my phone, so we'll go with Mr. Gonzalez, and then Ms. Derrick will be next. And Ms. Cook, I'm just going to need you to tell me whose hands are raised because I'm not going to be able to see them. Mr. Gonzalez.
[inaudible].
As a landlord, I uh, I encourage all landlords, please work with their uh renters. You know, a lot of people going through some hard times and uh, you know, if you have to go more than ninety days, that, that's fine. I, I'm just uh really concerned. I know several people that their rent for me and asking if they can get out of their contracts early and that's a sure and not a problem, but I just wanna encourage all the landlords if they can do the same. Thank you, Mayor.
So, basically, you're saying kinda the same thing I was, is, is let's try to work with our, if the landlords, try to work with the renters as much as, as they can. Um, so, um, are there any discussions? Is there a motion to change the ninety days to a different time period? Um, I'm looking through and um, I think I figured out how to find the participant list, but then I can't see anything else.
Mayor?
Ms. Derek. Ms. Derek.
Uh, yes, um, Mayor. Um, I, I wanna concur with you and Councilmember Gonzalez. I believe this is the time of um, uh, where we all need to use our humanity and work together as um, a city to help one another get through this, um, however we can. Um, but I'm also, I have a question about section four, um, as it pertains to a person who commits the offense, um, and this is gonna be a question for Mr. Costantino, I'm sure. Um, so, under section four, a person commits an offense and a person fails to provide a notice of proposed eviction, or if the person fails to comply with any other requirements proposed in this ordinance, a person who violates this ordinance commits a separate offense for each day the violation continues. Um, what, how do you determine on what day that, that begins? And could you just elaborate on that a little bit more about the punishment for landlords?
That would be uh, obviously, it's actually dependent on each, each particular situation. Um, the, as far as the specification of a fine, we did model this ordinance after one that was adopted uh in Austin. Uh, the council is free to modify that penalty provision in any way the council deems fit, if, if they think it's too harsh. Uh, a different penalty uh could be, could, could be uh, uh specified in the ordinance. It isn't not to exceed, so it could be anywhere from a dollar to, to five hundred upon conviction. But I, we're hoping that there would be voluntary, voluntary compliance with this and that the exceptions would be very rare, so.
So, um, if a person, I'm just trying to figure out how this is applied. Like, if a person gives only thirty days eviction notice, are they then charged for sixty days of noncompliance?
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think that we would, uh, there would be a complaint initiated in municipal court for each day. Uh, that, this is some standard language that is in, in many ordinances. Uh, the application here is a little bit difficult as you recognize, just to see how that could even apply, but in the whole time I've been uh with the city of San Marcos, I'm not aware uh for repeated violation of a city ordinance that we have filed on more than one, or on a multitude of days like that. It's just not something that we've done, so.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Ms. Cook? Does anyone else have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, let's call the roll and we'll vote.
Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
We, it is past seven to zero.
Okay, Ms. Cook, if you will read item twenty, please.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty temporarily waiving the fifteen percent late charge and the one percent per month interest charge for delinquent payment of hotel occupancy taxes under section seventy point one zero three of the San Marcos City Code due to the COVID-19 pandemic, providing for adoption of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading and providing an effective date. Amen.
I have a motion by Ms. Derek. I'm seeking a second.
Second.
Uh, that would be a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Um, just something that, that I want to say is this does not relieve anyone of their obligation to pay the tax. We are waiving late fees and penalties for a selected period of time. Anyone else to, if further explain this?
Ms. Derek has her hand raised?
Ms. Derek. I will, I will lower it.
Hi, this is Melissa Neal, Assistant Director of Finance.
Oh, okay.
So, just to, just to confirm what the mayor said, this is not um removing or leaving the, the taxes that are due. Each hotel is still required to submit their report for any hotel occupancy taxes that they have collected from their customers. Those reports are still due on the twentieth of each month, and we are just not assessing any late fee or penalty for those that cannot uh remit those payments. So, um, we, we're proposing a ninety-day, um...
Thank you, ma'am.
Off April twentieth, May twentieth, and June twentieth, there would be no late fees or any penalties assessed with those, but your report of taxes collected um would still be due at that time.
Councilmember Baker has his hand raised, Mayor. Mr. Baker?
Uh, yes, I just, maybe for the, the public would like to kind of put it out there too that, you know, part of how this got on our radar is looking at, you know, the decrease that they're obviously seeing, but also understanding how helpful of a partner these particular organizations might be to us here in the future. So, we wanted to make sure to have a good working relationship. I, I think, you know, it's a great idea for us to do this and, and to help, you know, everybody that you're small through these tough times.
Okay, are there any further comments? If not, Ms. Cook, if you will call the roll, we will vote.
Okay, I'll start with you, Dr. Marquez.
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed with seven to zero. Okay, Ms. Cook, if you will read item twenty-one. Yes, ma'am. Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one amending section two point five six six of the San Marcos City Code to authorize the city manager to approve certain contracts on behalf of the city for the purchase of goods and services necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare in relation to COVID-19 in amounts up to five hundred thousand without further city council approval, including procedural provisions providing for the adoption of this ordinance on only one reading as an emergency measure and declaring an effective date. Amen.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Derek, seconded by Dr. Mahakinen. Uh, Mr. Costantino, I had asked for some amendments. They are in our packet today. Do we need a motion to include those amendments?
I'm sorry, Mayor, there's a background noise that I'm hearing. I can hear your question.
Are the amendments that I requested that are in the packet, are those part of the motion or do we need to amend the motion?
So, the, the item that I believe the city clerk, uh, I'm pulling it up now from the, from the, from another webpage, uh, includes the, the uh, the edited ordinance that was uh sent out in your packet. Ms. Cook, can you confirm that? I'm trying to get, I'm trying to...
I'm, I'm looking at it as well, but yes, I believe um that I have the most updated ordinance.
I understand that it's what we're looking at. I wanna know if this is, has the public seen one without the amendments and I just feel better if we, if we had a motion to amend and I will be happy to do that, to insert these sentences that our council is seeing in blue, I hope.
Yeah, I, I can't see the ordinance at all right now.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to amend by inserting after where it starts out for the duration of the declaration of the local state of disaster related to COVID-19 to insert the words promulgated by Mayor Jane Houston on March fifteenth, twenty twenty and extended for an indefinite period by resolution of the city council adopted on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, and at the very end add a whole new sentence that says, "The city manager shall notify the city council of any and all expenditures made under this subsection within three days of initiating the surp- purchase," and I meant to say three business days.
Second.
And that's my amendment. I would seek a second. Thank you. Dr. Mahakinen is my second. Is there any discussion about the amendment? If not, Ms. Cook, would you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'll start with you, Mr. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
The motion to amend passed with seven to zero.
Okay, are there any discussions about the amendment, the, I'm sorry, this ordinance? It's actually, we're amending an existing ordinance, but are there any further questions about item twenty-one as presented and amended?
Uh, yes, I had a question, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify. So, this would allow Mr. Lombreras the opportunity to spend at his discretion up to that amount uh for any need that might come regarding COVID-19, right?
I'll let Mr. Costantino answer that.
Right, that's...
Or Mr. Lombreras?
It, it would have to be an item within the city budget and uh, yes, uh, as, as long as it was for COVID-19. And um, of course, he'd be reporting those purchases to the council.
Right, let me elaborate a little bit more if you want.
Yes, please, sir.
Uh, so, council member, uh, the way I would view the emergency purchases uh would be uh falling within the category of essential to our response during this uh COVID um pandemic crisis. Uh, it could take the form of uh focusing primarily on our public safety, uh, medical professional or essential personnel that are out there on the front line and having to respond to this issue. Um, it could, it could include items like facility or hotel uh usage uh for quarantine space. It could include, um, you know, um, personal protective equipment or supplies, sanitizing equipment or supplies, things that normally we wouldn't go out and purchase under uh normal operations, but are more relative to an emergency response such as this. Um, so, our approach would be focus on those expenditures that uh, quite honestly, if it's something that we could qualify uh for reimbursement uh up the line, we wanna do that because we wanna be good stewards of, of the, of the funds. Uh, and then the other thing is that uh, keep in mind, and it's very important to me, is that, you know, there's a significant impact to the citizens, no doubt about it, and on our local businesses, but the city's also having a significant impact. So, I have to keep in mind that whatever expenditures we do here, it has to be in line with something that does not harm our credit rating and our financial um ability to maintain an excellent credit rating, because uh our future of our community is very, very important. Not only uh recovery, but then also the future as well, and, and, you know, when we do uh projects. Uh, so, so our credit rating is gonna be very, very important. So, uh, so whatever the case, it's gonna be falling within those uh emergency areas and those examples that I just talked about.
Great. I think it's so important that we be able to be as nimble as possible as we see our numbers change every day and uh, you know, with more tests becoming available, um, you know, and being qualified for reimbursement as well as the different PPE opportunities out there. I, I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez has his hand raised. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess you did answer your question, personal equipment, but what I'm referring to is probably like masks for our citizens if they don't have the funds or, matter of fact, they can't even find it. Uh, I think the government's now requiring that everybody wear masks as much as possible. I wonder if that'd be considered as something that we can purchase?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's required, but I think it's highly recommended on the mask.
Yeah.
That's why I...
That's correct, uh...
I got mine.
Yeah, the mayor's correct. Uh, the Centers for Disease Control did come back, did come out with some recent guidelines around uh even homemade type masks that we're encouraging. As a matter of fact, we just hit a policy for our own employees uh just yesterday uh where we are in effect uh implementing that with our employees. Uh, obviously, for our employees, we're gonna try to acquire those, but we've encouraged them until the supplies get here, because that's not a supply that is readily available, that uh we essentially um ask anyone that wants to step up and wants to make a homemade mask, they're welcome to. Uh, it has certain effects and certain things that doesn't protect, so we're not trying to give a, a strong sense of security, but um, but I, I wanna make sure that I distinguish that this item is my, mainly for emergency purchases as it relates to our public safety personnel, our medical professionals, and our essential personnel. I, I, I'm, I don't have anything in here on the public. To me, that's an item that we really need to have a focused discussion with council in terms of what do we need to do with the public, whether that's testing, whether it's any other items that council wants to consider, and I think that's, that could be a separate item we can discuss.
Which, actually, our next item kinda gets into a little bit more of that possibly. Okay, uh, are there any further questions, comments, notation? If not, Ms. Ms. Cook? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker.
Uh, Bert, I'm, I'm a little, I, I mean, I, I'm just kinda confused where you're getting that interpretation, because the, what I'm reading is the agenda caption says that it's for public safety. Why, why would we not be able to use these funds for uh something that we deem general for the whole public?
So, the, the clarification I was making, council member, and I'll, i- if, if the city attorney wants to give me that uh broad interpretation in terms of the use, what I was trying to distinguish is around public safety personnel, medical professionals, or even essential personnel within our operations. That, that's what I can control, you know, what we do in our operations. Um, you know, I think public safety may be a general uh terminology that we use in terms of uh being able to provide that service to the public, because if you look at what we do, public safety is a big part of it, whether it's our police, our fire, um, and even some of our other essential services. But I'll leave that up to Mr. Costantino if he wants to comment any further.
I don't have any further comments. I can't read the ordinance right now. Uh, for some reason, it will not open in PDF on any, any one of the websites that I've used. So, just that one item, since the record is currently unavailable, so I can't, I can't speak to the language of the ordinance.
That's because our down, our um, internet is down here, so, um...
Understood. I, I, I tried to read through, through Google and the city clerk's website as well. I'm able to download the entire agenda. That specific item will not open uh as a PDF, so...
I'm gonna just paste it to your email and see if that will come through.
Okay.
Okay. Are there other questions that we need to wait for that, or is council ready to go ahead and vote for this?
I had, Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Derek had their hands raised.
Uh, who did?
Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Derek.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, I brought my hand down. I thought I did.
I don't know where... Ms. Derek?
Um, I just, I understand not wanting to spend um funds on masks for people, especially since we've got so many people making homemade masks and that kinda thing, but could this funding be used so that people can get tested for COVID? Could you approve something along those lines with this new um, uh, limit and, and purview?
So, so, council member, the way, the way I view these items is, as I noted for uh, the, the, what I captioned for this purpose, uh, agenda item number twenty-three is the discussion with the council to talk about uh possible uh budget amendment to provide funding for personal protective equipment and testing uh for COVID-19. So, to me, eh, that discussion falls under that item.
Okay. Well, I'd also just like to express my complete comfort level and trust with you as our city manager to make the decisions needed um with this new purview and this new limit and, and just wanna tell you, go, go do it.
Okay, so, we ready to vote? If we are, Ms. Cook, if you will call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'll start with you, Ms. Derek.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? Dr. Mahakinen? Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Let's continue with item twenty-two.
Okay, Mayor, this is consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-three R, filling a vacancy on the board of directors of the Alliance Regional Water Authority, R-W, and defer it an effective date. And Mayor Houston, you are currently serving, um, through April thirtieth, um, so, I don't know if you want to explain that a little bit?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Uh, we have two vacancy, well, not two vacancies. Uh, my term will be ending at the end of this month. I don't remember how long I've been serving on this board. It's been several years now. I'm currently vice chair, so I would appreciate it, uh, if y'all would support me to be reappointed to this board and then, uh, the position, um, that Steve Parker held, we, we put Ms. Holbert in there and she's not, uh, a city employee anymore, so we will be waiting for staff unless Mr. Lombreras has someone today to determine who to fill that vacancy, but I would appreciate, uh, being returned to this board when my term, uh, expires.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to, uh, reappoint, uh, Mayor Jane Houston to board position number six.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a motion by Dr. Mahakinen, seconded by my, my colleague on the board, Mr. Rocky Moore. Uh, any further discussion? Mr. Lombreras, are we still holding for a staff member at this point in time?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Mayor. We, we will, uh, we will bring that recommendation forward as soon as we can.
Okay. That sounds good. Ms. Cook, if you will call the roll on my reappointment to the Alliance Regional Water Authority Board.
Yes, ma'am. I'll start with you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Derrick?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. We have item twenty-three. Ms. Cook, if you will tell us what that one's about.
Yes, ma'am. Receive a presentation and hold discussion regarding a possible budget amendment to provide funding for personal protective equipment and testing for COVID-19 and provide direction to the city manager.
This is a discussion, so I'm not seeking a motion, but this was placed on the agenda, I believe, by Dr. Mahakinen and, um, Mr. Gonzalez, so if y'all want to start or if staff wants to start, I'm open.
Um, I don't mind starting, uh, because of my, um, uncertainty as to, uh, the authorization to the city manager for expenditure up to five hundred thousand dollars connected to the COVID-19, what would that actually cover, uh, in the absence of any budget line in our current fiscal year budget, obviously for anything related to COVID-19? And so I just wanted to, and I appreciate, uh, council member Gonzalez's support, to bring this to a discussion tonight, but I just, I thought we really needed to speak as the council with the advice and information from our staff over what would be the prudent measures to take in terms of budget amendments, because obviously, uh, anytime you're talking about a budget amendment, if it's for new funding, uh, you all, we also have to be concerned about the funding source. And as Mr. Lombreras correctly pointed out, um, we're having major decline, uh, in our sales tax revenue. Pardon me, I'm suffering from allergies. I'm not ill with the flu or anything. Um, with the decline in sales tax revenue and hot tax revenue, uh, we, we have to be very aware of the needs of our community and at the same time, our own fiscal restraints. So, to me, it was something that we needed to do together, uh, to have a conversation, to share concerns and insight and any information and ideas we had, uh, with, with the city staff as full participants.
Mr. Gonzalez, did you want to add anything to that?
No, ma'am. I think you pretty much covered everything. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lombreras, do you have questions for us?
Uh, Mayor, I, I've got, uh, Chief Staff and, uh, also Rachel Engel, our emergency management coordinator, uh, available, and they're more than happy to kind of give some perspective as to what, uh, could be some possible areas to focus within the public. Um, I know that, uh, I'm not sure if we finalized the whole reporting issue, but, uh, Chief Staff can also provide some perspective in terms of, uh, some of the more recent developments, um, that, 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 you know, some items and supplies that we're getting, but whatever the case, uh, we're available or either Chief Staff or, or Ms. Engel can chime in and provide some, uh, some thoughts around, around this area that might help council.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Bert. Chase Staff, Public Safety Director, uh, happy to give an update on that. Um, so in terms of PPE for first responders, that has been our focus in, um, both at the county level and the city level. Rachel and, and Alex have been working really hard, uh, to make sure that we have, have three to four day supply of adequate PPE for all first responders. Also, behind the scenes, the hospitals are, uh, ordering that, those supplies for their staff, uh, and are reporting that they're doing okay on those supplies. So, um, in terms of using a big chunk of city money to purchase protective equipment for the entire population of San Marcos, um, I, I, I don't recommend that. I don't think we could sustain that, uh, and I think it's important that we continue to encourage the public to source those materials for themselves. It seems right now that they're, they're doing that well. When I go out and come to work and I make a run to HEB, I'm seeing a lot of masks and things like that, so people are doing that well. Um, any other questions about PPE before, uh, we do something different?
Uh, Mayor?
Ms. Dr. Mahakinen?
I just wanted clarification, Mr. Staff. You said you, that there was a three to five day supply of, what did you say, for the first responders?
Personal equipment, and, and that's a, that's a moving three to four day supply, not as in they're going to run out, uh, three days from today. Uh, they're wanting to make sure that there's a, there's an extra supply for three to four days, and that's a moving, uh, a moving supply.
Sure. So that one, one something's used, there's, there's something in the pipeline to replace the, the, the materials, the equipment that's, that's being used?
That's correct. And, um, just as an example, today, uh, Mr. Villalobos of Paints County picked up, uh, a nice resupply from the state, uh, to include the N ninety-five masks, about a thousand of those, uh, about a thousand, uh, surgical masks, about thirty-nine hundred pairs of gloves and another thousand or so, uh, non-surgical type gloves. And so there's, uh, we are still getting those items in, and when we get those from the state, those are generally no cost to the city.
Okay. And of course, we're hoping that we'll be reimbursed for, for anything that we get. Ms. Cook?
Uh, Mr. Baker has his hand raised. Mr. Baker?
Hey, uh, yes, uh, Mr. Staff. Um, when it comes to PPE, we hear stories nationwide about, uh, individuals that are working on the front lines, that are being asked to come up with their own or potentially overuse the, the, the product like a mask. Um, do we have any sense of that going on right now at any of the facilities that we're working with? Uh, and what, what is our approach to fixing that?
So, keep in mind that there are different types of masks. For example, the N ninety-five mask being the most sought after and most effective. We're trying to prioritize those to, uh, emergency first responders like police, fire, EMS, uh, and medical professionals. Uh, and then down from that, you have like the surgical masks, the cloth mask and then homemade, uh, cloth face coverings. Each of those has a different level of effectiveness. We're doing okay on the N ninety-five mask for those people that I just mentioned. We certainly could not make an attempt to issue those out, uh, broader than that. So, for example, what we're doing for city employees that have to come to work and still be out in the public, first, we're, we're encouraging them and really reminding them, maintain social distance, personal hygiene, sanitation, uh, practices, and then, after all that, you've done, remember to cover your face, and even with a homemade cloth covering, uh, is okay. And that's not so much to prevent the wearer of the mask from getting the disease from someone else, but the idea there, and this comes straight from CDC, is to prevent the wearer of the mask from exhaling those droplets and then possibly infecting, uh, other people around them.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, what, what I'm, what I'm really seeking from staff, uh, and I know what I'm asking you is inherently unfair because we're in uncharted territory, uh, this is the first time, like, it seems to me that this, this city and this country is experiencing something this severe since, uh, nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, and our resources are greater, we are a much richer country, our medical knowledge is, is, uh, massively increased since that time. What I'm really asking for the city staff, if there is any hesitation on the part of the city staff to use any city financial resources, uh, to the general public, that that's one point. And the second point is, Mr. Staff mentioned that, that, that the equipment up to now has been free of charge, has not been a cost to the city, but, uh, I, I, I hesitate saying this at all, but it, it seems to me that we have to be at least open to the potential that things will get worse before they get better. And so what I would like is to have the city staff getting, not tonight, I'm not expecting you to be able to do it tonight, but by our next meeting, to give us an amendment to the budget with a real dollar amount, so that we're not delaying, there's no delay at all, in the ability of our city government to spend resources to deal with COVID-19 in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Mahakinen.
Go ahead.
I, I think I would, would, would ask Melissa Neal to, to clarify this or confirm it, but we have a, we have a capacity within our current budget and the budgeted funds now for the purchase of supplies, and that can include the supplies needed for, for our first line employees to protect them from this COVID-19 threat. Once that were exceeded, I think we could bring back a budget amendment, maybe even more than one budget amendment, um, even after the fact if needed. But Melissa, could you confirm that?
Yes. Hi, Melissa Neal, Assistant Director of Finance. So, the one thing that I would caution and before making any commitments to fund anything for non-operational use, um, is the, um, consideration to our credit rating. So, um, creditors are currently looking at, um, three main components, financial performance, the current debt structure, and heavily looking at city management. And any appropriation of funds for non-operational expenses or support of, um, emergency supplies that are out of the norm with the other emergency supplies that we're purchasing, which would highly, highly likely to result in a downgrade in our credit. Um, I, I don't think, along with Chase Staff's recommendation, um, the, the purchase of, of supplies for, um, citizens across San Marcos is something that, um, the city should commit to at this time. Um, and I think the, the future, the, the long-term impacts of making such decisions could have, uh, much bigger implications, um, than just the current, um, the current short-term value to that.
Uh, I appreciate that, and that's not what I was asking the city staff to do. It seems to me there's a huge, massive middle between ensuring supplies for our first responders and providing equipment to the entire population of San Marcos. And I'm concerned that in, in, in us bringing this up, all of a sudden there was this jump from first responders' equipment to the entire community. And it seems to me that there, as I said, there's a huge middle in between, and what I'm guessing, what I'm, guess what I'm asking the city staff to do is to work through some scenarios over increased needs, because you say first responders, and I very much respect, right, the, the police, the EMS, the fire, uh, you might have others in mind, but look at the sheer amount of people, uh, workers at grocery stores are interacting with. And it seems to me we have to think of the supply chain, and we have to think of how many of the businesses have been designated by our governor as to be necessary and that they're not going to close. So, I don't know if any of you have been in a grocery store, um, uh, but it seems to ebb and flow, but, uh, and I do want to commend the grocery stores I know about to be, uh, have already been implemented the six feet rule, creating one entrance for an entrance, the other for an exit, uh, putting up the barriers. Uh, they're doing, uh, an excellent job. My point is that I, I just want to make sure, I don't want to hear a month from now that we're scrambling to pass a budget amendment because of something that blew up, uh, in terms of a public health need. So, I agree with my colleagues when we discussed extending the authority of the city manager up to five hundred thousand dollars in expenditure. We have complete trust in our city manager. So, to me, this is just connected to that trust to have some kind of, uh, if the city staff can work through scenarios, um, for any potential bu- budget amendments that we have to make. And I, and I understand what Ms. Neal said about keeping our credit rating high because that in the long run will help our community, but we're dealing with a public health crisis. And it seems to me we should be able to find some kind of creative way to protect our rating while at the same time having the resources necessary to help our community.
Mayor Houston, Mr. Baker has a, his hand raised.
Mr. Baker?
I'd like to say I agree with Dr. Mahakinen on several of those points, and, you know, when we think about a public health crisis, it's shown time and time again that prevention is going to be cheaper for us than treatment. And so that's where I, you know, siding on the side of these businesses that are staying open and coming up with some modeling, because right now, we're, we're actually, it seems like we're above, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're above the ten percent that we're seeing nationally of infections, that we're actually closer to fourteen, fifteen percent looking at our numbers today. And so if we continue to test in larger and larger numbers and we don't see that number going down, we need to plan for that fifteen percent of being sick and using equipment and the people on the front lines needing, you know, even more equipment as well. Um, so, yeah, I, I think it's, it's really important that, uh, we, like Dr. Mahakinen suggests, find, find some money, and, you know, if that's a function of our credit rating going down, again, if it serves to save people's lives, I, I would support that.
Comments by anyone else?
Uh, I wanted to add additionally, you know, with, with the conversation changing so quickly, I wanted to go ahead and specifically when it comes to testing, uh, talk about the differences that we've been hearing between the molecular and the serology testing and their process of being added to the emergency use authorization, uh, forum online. Uh, I want to publicly state that I do not think that we should be waiting for, um, these Abbott tests, uh, in particular, and that we need to do everything we can to mobilize tests to as many people in our community so that we can make sure we have a true sense of the amount of positive cases that are out there. We already saw that HEB, as good of a job as they are doing, that our big HEB has a confirmed case added. Um, and so we need to make sure that as this issue grows bigger, which it will, because we're going to be testing more people, um, that we make sure that we're doing everything we can to use all available prostheses, you know, if there are missing out on reimbursement for, you know, what might be a cheaper test, um, as opposed to waiting for the more complex tests or using them in tiers as, as a partnership and, and comparison to each other. Um, whatever the case is, I, I think we need to make sure we're being as swift as possible because this is a true public health crisis. because this is a true public health crisis.
So if I could just make one comment about the testing, and thank you, Councilmember Baker for that. So testing up to this point has been a function of the Hayes County Health Department. They've been running that, procuring the test kits, making sure that those that needed to be tested get the tests and reporting all the data. So we want to continue that process. It's been working, and right now we think it will continue to work. We're not recommending that the city get involved in the public testing business right now. We want to keep funneling that process through the county.
May I ask a question?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. This is Ed Mahakkinen. Mr. Staff, you mentioned that the county, you're going through the county process because the county actually has a health department. Do you know when someone gets tested through the county office, the county department, who pays for that test?
It's a culmination of things. There are free testing sites available, those with health insurance. It will be billed through their health insurance, but I saw something, and I haven't read the whole thing yet, from the governor's office, I think it was today, for a move towards all of the testing being free. But right now, the county has been funding some of those test kits, and private providers are funding, are buying some of those as well.
The reason for my concern is, as you know, our health insurance system in the United States is based on employment. And we've had substantial increase because of the nature of our local economy in the unemployment rates. I haven't seen hard figures, but colloquially, it seems to me that we're suffering maybe more than other communities, given the number of jobs in retail, stores, restaurants, bars, other entertainment venues. And we now have a population that even if it did have health insurance, now it doesn't. And so I would just, again, like to take this opportunity to, if my colleagues agree with me, to have the city staff work with the county staff to see, and with any state agencies and departments, to just expedite. I don't want someone who thinks that they're sick not to go because they're not sure about the payment. And so I want us to get ahead of this because I think everybody acknowledges a certain question mark to this virus because of the, some people who have the disease are asymptomatic. They won't even know they have it. And even the people who might have it, they might have a mild case, and they might think, oh, this is just the normal flu. It seems to me if we're going to get a handle on it, we're going to have to have, you know, some more testing. So, again, I don't want to replace any department of government at any level, but it seems to me that we really need to work with the county and the state to see how we can expedite more testing.
Mr. Staff, would it be fair to say that y'all are already doing that?
Yes, ma'am. The topic of testing comes up in every daily call. We get updates on that from both Eric and Mr. Villalobos, in some cases, the county judge. And so, yes, we are talking about that daily.
Yeah, I think there's a lot that's in flux right now. There are folks with, trying to develop tests because we didn't have a test for this particular virus since it's something new. So there's just a lot going on right now. FDA is, you know, approving more things, probably daily. There's just a lot happening. Are there other questions?
I've had my hand raised for a bit.
I'm sorry. I'm on my phone and I can't see the participant list. My apologies, Ms. Derek, go ahead.
I just want to lend my voice to those of my fellow council members who want for us to go forth with making testing more widely available. I've been sick for two weeks now. They gave me steroids, which is why I'm here and standing up. But I have no idea if I have the potential to be passing this virus, if I actually have it or not. I've had no way to get tested. I have health insurance. Private practitioners won't see you because they don't want you to come in their office if they think you have it. So the only way that you can get tested that I am aware of as an individual is if you need hospitalization. And that is not going to get us where we need to be. So I've actually been through this process as a person, and I, you know, both doctors told me, no, just stay home. I did a tele-doctor through what Judge Becerra had set up with the molecular testing that he was going to train to do. And they prescribed me medication and just told me not to come in. But our citizens are not being tested, and we're not going to get a true idea of what is actually going on here until that happens. And I think people need to know, they just need to know.
Mayor, I'd like to throw my two cents in if nobody's... I'm okay?
Yes, please.
Well, this is my take. I understand the credit rating, I really do. But I understand life, and that's much more important to me than anything else. And whatever we can do within our means, reasonable, I want us to try to do that. I think we've been fortunate in San Marcos, we haven't lost anybody. But once it starts happening, it's going to hit home, and we're going to wish we would have done whatever we could to prevent this. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I need to know from Mr. Lombreras. This is a direction item, there's not a vote. Do you feel like you have the direction from council? Do you need more information? Help me determine what's needed to close this out, if there's nobody else who has anything to add.
So, Mayor, I am pretty clear about the public testing. I'm not 100% clear on the personal protective equipment. We, I can, I understand the personal protective equipment as it relates to our public safety, medical professionals, and that type of thing, but I wasn't clear whether the council's intent would be for the public on that end of it. I understand the public testing for the public. I'm not sure about the personal protective equipment. That's the only thing that I'm unclear about.
If we're talking about the masks, I see that there are a number of people who are making them. I've got scrap fabric and I actually had some elastic. I know not everybody does, but I've made some. I understand that there's an enterprising downtown business who is closed right now, but they're out making masks. So they're one of those businesses that has pivoted to figure out what can I do to not be totally closed during this crisis? Not everybody can do that, but they did, so I commend them for that. I don't know that we can, if it's masks, I don't know that we can provide that for everyone. I don't know that we are going to be asked or need to. So what is the feeling from others?
What I'd like to have is just the resources. I don't want to wait and make this decision further in the future. I'd rather have some funds aside that we can identify in case, whatever we have to do.
But, Mr. Gonzalez, what is your definition of what we have, what we're going to have to do? I think that's the question.
Let's go to the testing. If it comes to that point, I want to identify some funds that we can use to test the people that cannot afford to get tested.
If we hang loose, there will be, there should be tests from, that will be either reimbursable or that will be just paid for by either the state or the feds. It might be federal money coming through the state that we should have at some point in time. So are you wanting to kind of beat the clock on that?
Yes, I'm not saying we have to go out and purchase them now, but I just want to make sure we have the funds in case it gets to that point that it gets really bad here in San Marcos.
Others, remember that I can't see if your hand is raised, so, yes, I can. Dr. Mahakkinen?
Mayor, to get reimbursed, an expenditure has to be made. Sorry to be Captain Obvious. And so if we're anticipating getting reimbursed for anything, there has to be the initial expenditure. So all I'm asking for is the city staff to work up some numbers. I'm not talking about $100 million. I'm talking about prudent budgeting for a range of potential uses that the city staff, who is working with the county and is up to date with everything happening at the state level, I'm trying to give as much flexibility to the city staff as it can handle, and I'm not so sure. It's like a tug-of-war, but no one's pulling on the other end of the rope. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't know the best test. I don't know the needs when it comes to this virus across the community. We have people in the city staff who are doing this all the time. So what I'm saying here is, it seems to me there's four people in the council at least who have said, we are interested in making sure that there's the financial resources in place, so when the city manager wants to push the button at the recommendation of his staff in consultation with the county and the state government and the CDC and anybody else who wants to weigh in, it's there.
Yeah, I actually think that we did that in giving him the authorization to spend the money in the previous one. Would that be correct? Ms. Derek, I'm back on now, so I see that you've got your hand raised, and I will be able to see the participant list. Mr. Lombreras, I think we're looking for, we're looking for reports, we're looking for what are the needs? We're looking to you and your emergency staff for assistance here.
Mayor, I'm super clear about that. I appreciate what Dr. Mahakkinen is saying. That's not where I'm coming from. I get the intent, and I want to fulfill the council's intent, but I'm, there were various perspectives, whether it's personal protective equipment for frontline people and personal protective equipment like masks for the public. So all I was asking was a simple question around, is the funding, we can easily come up with a funding source, we can identify what the dollars are, we can try to balance between something that wouldn't impact our credit rating. I think staff could get creative, and we can come up with some ideas. All I'm trying to do is package something for you that meets your intent. And that's the public testing. I know what the intent is, I know clearly what that issue is. I wasn't as clear about the personal protective equipment, and that was really my only question.
Okay. Ms. Derek?
I can weigh in on the PPE. I think it's the individual's responsibility to do whatever it is that they feel is necessary. We need to save all of our money for our best, the best stuff for our first responders. On the issue of testing, I know there are a lot of people who'd be willing to pay for it. So it may just be a temporary, you know, tick in the budget, and then you have a lot of people willing to pay for it, and then that kind of sustains it, and then it could, you know, then roll into, you know, some kind of reimbursement type situation. But I think we need to get on it. That's all I have to say. And I trust you guys to work something out, and I know that you know where we're coming from. So I hope that staff can come up with some creative ideas for us.
Okay, hold on. Dr. Mahakkinen, I see you raising your hand, but over here on the participant list, I've got Max Phil Baker, who has, I'm sorry, he beat you to it, but I'll get to you.
That's okay.
So I just kind of fall in line with what Melissa Derrick said. You know, I think that testing is a priority when it comes to equipment. You know, fortunately, we can't get it for everybody. It would be nice, though, if we did take into consideration some of these specifically needy populations that will have harder access getting to those PPE. And then in addition to that, you know, just on the point of individuals making them out in the community, I've actually been particularly concerned about that, seeing as these folks are technically not deemed an essential business, and maybe they are, maybe they're not, because they're just kind of making this with a sewing machine. And because the testing is not there, they could potentially be non-symptomatic transfers of this disease. So while it's good that members of our community are finding ways to kind of diversify, and I'm sure they're doing a lot to clean up and be sanitary throughout that process, you know, the only surefire way to know that you do not have this is the test. So that's my big concern there.
Okay, well, if I bought some masks from somebody, I'd certainly be washing them at home, and I'm washing mine before I give them to anybody. Dr. Mahakkinen?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, what I was really asking for is, because of Mr. Lombreras's comment, when it came to our earlier budget item, extending his authority to spend up to $500,000, that seemed to be completely connected to city staff and direct use of resources by city staff members. So, again, what I'm asking is for the city staff to work with all of the appropriate members of our city government, with the county and the state, and any information you all are getting from the CDC or the US Surgeon General, and come back to us if you, well, I want to hear it either way, but to, if you think that there needs to be some resources spent outside of resources being used by actually, actual employees of the city government. I mean, I'm sure you've been seeing news reports from New York City, from California, from Washington State, New Orleans, which is not that far away, from Texas. And so I'm just asking for some anticipatory action so that if there needs to be more resources made, and if the city manager thinks what we did tonight is insufficient, that there is something that the council can do at our next meeting or the next meeting after that to make sure everything is in place in terms of the resources he needs to protect our community's public health and safety.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question now, and that is, we had agreed that we were going to meet weekly, at least for a while during this COVID pandemic, or what I call the deadly disease. Mr. Lombreras, Ms. Cook, do we have a meeting set up for next week?
No, we do not.
Does council want to meet on the weeks that we do not meet for our regular meetings?
We'd have to schedule it on another day because we have P and Z next Tuesday.
I'm not worried about the date at this point, but thank you for pointing that out because you're right. So, and council, just so you know, we will have an item on each agenda to get an update about what's going on with the pandemic. That will be on our agenda for the next who-knows-how-long, even regular meeting agendas. But I'm looking to see, and now I'm using a different computer, and I got to change glasses so I can see your smiling faces. Who wants to, how many of you want to have meetings on the off weeks, which would not be a Tuesday? Just a brief meeting, or do you want to just get a report from staff?
I want a meeting with capacity to talk about stuff.
I see one meeting, I see two meetings, I see three meetings, I see four, five. Okay, looks like we're going to have a meeting sometime next week. We will leave that to staff to determine. Dr. Mahakkinen, I haven't forgotten about you. My point is, this will give us more opportunity to either let Mr. Lombreras tell us what he spent money on that we have authorized him to do, or to, if he feels like he needs to ask for direction, that will give us an opportunity to do that. Does that help your concern?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And I just wanted to echo Councilmember Gonzalez's comment. Our first priority is the health and safety of our citizens, and that's prime, that has to be more important than any other consideration.
And Mayor, could I just suggest that, I don't know if we want to have a meeting every Tuesday or just as needed. I don't want it to get redundant or, you know... I don't want it to get redundant or, you know. You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting.
Well, I think that the, the question is going to be, but of course, you know, we have to call, we'd have to call it three days, 72 hours in advance, unless there's an emergency, in which case we need an hour. Is the minimum time. So my thought is I'd rather get it on my calendar and cancel when we don't need it than to scramble and try to pull together a meeting when we need to have one.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of where.
We don't need it, yeah.
That's, that's, I, I didn't get that far, but thank you for bringing that up because I didn't say that, but I meant to.
Yeah, I mean, with all these people yapping, yapping all day, I don't want us to be another thing that just yapping. I mean, we have something to say, we need to come out and say it. We have something to talk about, but if we don't, we should just, you know, leave people alone.
Yeah. Okay, so, did I hear someone?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am, you go right ahead.
Thank you so much. I'd rather have a series of meetings, and I don't know if this is possible to check in, rather than to have like a weekly meeting where it just extends two or three hours. I don't know if that works, or that could be a possibility for all of us. Is that a possibility?
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
I'd rather have a series of short meetings than one meeting that extends two or three hours.
I, I would think that these meetings would be provide, staff providing us an update. They might have a couple of questions for us to make a decision, maybe not. And I wouldn't think that they'd be more than 30 minutes, an hour, if we really get into a discussion like we have on this one. That's my thought, is they're not going to be long. They may be only 30 minutes. But if there's something that Mr. Lembres needs us to vote on, then we have to, you know, properly provide notice to the public, you know, the things we always do.
Yeah, the meeting, the Tuesday meetings we've had thus far haven't lasted that long, maybe the first one.
Yeah, the first one, but we had stuff to talk about.
Right.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Lembres, are we, are we closer to providing the type of information that you were seeking?
We'll give it a shot, Mayor. What we'll do is we'll put something together and we'll run it by the council when we have our first meeting.
Okay, does that work for everyone that we're, we've authorized? That Mr. Lembres in a previous item can spend money more than, more than what he, he could before. That is an ordinance that is going to be in there until we change it. So it'll end at the end of the disaster recovery. But I'd have asked, Mr. Cosentino, I'm going to ask Ms. Cook to bring that back at some point to clean that up. Are we good with scheduling at least maybe a couple of off-week meetings, at least for the foreseeable future? Will let Ms. Cook let us know when that is. And we'll, we'll let Mr. Lembres and his staff, emergency, finance, and others bring us some kind of report. Are we good with that?
Yes.
And we can close this item out. What we will do, council, is the internet is back up. I was able to, I think, kind of smoothly go from my phone back to the computer. We're back broadcasting. So do not leave this meeting electronically. You might turn off your video and your audio for a little bit. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we will come back with the items that we have not worked on yet, which I think are only two. So is that okay with our council?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you back in 10 minutes, which by the clock at City Hall would be 10 till 9. And it looks like Mr. Robertson got our signal, so we are back online. And we are at item one, having completed a number of other items in the interim. So happy we can have a presentation. And Ms. Cook, would you read item one?
I will do. Receive a presentation and update on the following semi-annual preferred scenario map amendment application and provide direction to staff. It's PSA 20-02, Riverbend Ranch. Request to amend the preferred scenario map from area of stability, low intensity, to growth area, medium intensity, for plus or minus 1,142 acres of land located approximately at the intersection of North Old Bastrop Highway and Staples Road.
Okay, Mr. Lembres, are we looking to you or to Ms. Mattingly to start this off?
Mayor, we have Ms. Shannon Mattingly, our, our planning director, that's going to give a presentation on this item. This is a required presentation and an update in regard to the preferred scenario amendment application for Riverbend Ranch, and I'll let her take it away.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Mattingly, you're up.
Good evening. So this is the first phase in our PSA process. It's just a presentation to let you know that the project is coming forward. The property is located near the intersection of North Old Bastrop Highway and Staples Road. It's approximately 1,142 acres. It's located within a low-intensity zone and is designated on the preferred, as designated on the preferred scenario map. Next slide, please, Julie. Thank you. So the request is to amend the preferred scenario map. I'm used to having my pointer right now where I can point for you, but the area that you see in yellow is the Riverbend Ranch area. It is area of stability, low intensity, and they're looking to go to medium intensity. Several of the council members probably remember this project. It has come before you briefly once before. Also was discussed a couple of times in a council committee meeting. They are working with the staff currently on a development agreement that will identify how the project moves forward. It is looking at residential for about 1,200 acres. Close to 4,000 single-family units is what we're thinking is going to be the end product in the development agreement. There's also a multifamily site, as well as some commercial along the main roadways. Again, that development agreement is still being negotiated with the city. They have been working with us on utilities and working with Ms. Moyer and Mr. Taggart on different options to not have to do a wastewater lift, a lift station or package plant, but to actually connect to, not to do a package plant, actually to connect to the city's water and wastewater for a portion of the project. Part of it is outside the CCN, and as part of that development agreement, it would be negotiated that they would come back into our CCN for a portion of the property as well. Next slide, please. We've got a couple of concept plans. You're going to see two different sections of this development. This section of it is mainly the single-family residential portion of it. As you can see, there's also some parkland and some commercial along the corners as well on. But the reason that it's on two maps is really just because it's such a big, big property that as we move forward, it'll be negotiated as part of one development agreement. Next slide, please. So this is the second part of the project. You can see that there, along Staples Road, there is a track four that's a multifamily site. Track two is a commercial site along there. And then there's some residential that's mixed in, as well as some parkland space. On the very bottom, where you see the lots that are already platted, there's some open space, as well as some duplex proposed there as well. Again, all of this will come back to you as we're going through. This is just letting you know, hey, we're getting started. If there's any comments that you want to have as we move forward, and then we'll start the, start the process with the neighborhood meetings and complete the negotiation. Next slide, please. So this is the schedule that we're looking at. We did hold a virtual meeting today that was part of our neighborhood meeting requirement for another project. Seemed to go okay, I think. And then, right now, we're looking at probably other people holding those same neighborhood meetings virtually until we can get back online with public meetings. And so assuming that the development agreement gets completed and we continue with all the negotiations as they're moving. We had a conference call with them earlier today, and I feel like the project is moving forward. And we're pretty close in, in closing all of that out. So we should stay on schedule, which means, you know, here we are tonight on April 7th with the city council informational meeting. It will go to Planning Commission next week, just the same thing, presentation that you're getting tonight, just an informational meeting. And then on the 28th, it will be a public hearing in action. And then the proposal is to come back to the council on May 19th. And we're trying to get them completed with the two public hearings and then the second reading of the ordinance by the end of June before we take a break in July. And so assuming that the development agreement and everything gets completed, we'll be on this schedule moving forward and should have them finished by June 16th. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
Council, do we have questions? I see Mr. Baker.
Yes, Shannon, for, for the public's, I guess, purview, can you explain some of the back and forth that we went over in the committee? Maybe particularly regarding whether or not, like, what, what kind of focused our decision to, to move forward with this project?
So, of course, it's a preferred scenario amendment. So we haven't got into all of the final negotiations on the development agreed to complete. But really, the main reason for moving this project forward is there's a concern with having package plants out in our ETJ that aren't coming online and becoming part of our water and wastewater systems and.
Ms. Mattingly, would you explain to the public what a package plant is? Because I'm not sure everyone knows, and I didn't the first time I heard it.
Well, I'm going to wing it, but basically it would be them developing their own wastewater plant instead of connecting to the city wastewater facility.
Thank you.
Hope that's a good enough explanation.
That's good.
But yes, so that was the main focus for us, wanting to look at moving forward with the project. They are still looking at a lot of our requirements. They, there was a lot of discussion regarding their location and the river and not wanting them to discharge into the river. So that was some of the additional discussion that was brought forward, environmentally sensitive areas. And truthfully, they're meeting the majority of our development code requirements going forward. There's just a few variations that they're requesting, mainly more aesthetic-type variations in regards to garages and those sorts of things that we'll get in more detail with as we're going through the public hearings once we're finalized.
And Ms. Mattingly, am I correct that because they have a 100-year floodplain on at least a portion of the project, that they would be required to do a qualified watershed protection plan?
They would, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's my big concern.
But that's required regardless, correct, Ms. Mattingly?
It is part of the plating process. So if they platted their property, they would have to do it, that's correct.
Great, thank you, Ms. Derrick.
Shannon, I have a question. Are, are we still trying to work out whether we're going to write a letter of no objection for them to seek a county Pid?
There have been some additional meetings with the county, but nothing has been finalized at this point that I'm aware of.
But we would need to provide that, correct? So are they still, did we agree to that? I know we agreed to look at the snout housing, the, the alleyways, different things like that, that they, they didn't feel like was going to suit their projects. But then they also had, that was kind of out there with the either or, like, you know, either, you know, let us have all these waivers, and then maybe we won't ask you for the letter, or maybe we'll just ask you for the letter and some of the, so I just want to know where we are in negotiations with that.
So as far as the development goes, I believe that, that the direction from the committee when we met was that we would be okay with moving forward with some of those variations if they would agree to not do the package plant. With that said, we had a meeting, trying to remember if it, all my weeks seem to be blending together. I think it was last week with the county where we did talk to them. They were kind of wanting to see where we were at moving forward with the project. And so we have not agreed, to my knowledge, to provide any type of agreement yet, but there are still discussions that the developer is having with the county. And I don't know if maybe Mr. Lembres, if you have any additional information as far as where the county stands. That was the last discussion from the call that I was on, was they were still looking at it.
That, that's pretty much the extent of the, the last conversation that we had with the county, and I, I'm not aware of any other developments other than that. So you're, you're pretty much spot on in terms of recapping where we're, where we're at.
Yeah, so there's no promises yet to supply that letter of no objection for, for a county Pid.
That's a question, I believe, for someone.
I believe that that would have to come back to the council for.
That's correct.
To make that determination.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I see no other electronic hands raised anymore. Questions, there's not a vote on this this evening. It's just a presentation to let everyone know that's part of the preferred scenario amendment process, is to let the public know what's, what's happening or what's potentially happening.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ms. Gonzalez.
I was in the committee as well, and one of the concerns I have is about the package plants. I was really concerned about what's going to go into, into the river. And that's one of the reasons I was kind of, wanted them to be annexed for that reason. That's all.
Ms. Mattingly, are they asking for annexation?
It would not, let me double-check, I'm sorry, I just drew.
If we have a preferred scenario amendment, I assume that means we're going to be looking.
Yes.
They would be requesting annexation.
Yes, they're going to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I see hands by Ms. Derrick and Mr. Gonzalez. Are those still current?
No, ma'am, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we will call this item complete, and we will continue. Ms. Cook, I show that all we have left right now before executive session is item 18. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, then we will move on to item 18. If you will read that caption for us, please.
Yes, ma'am. Consider approval of ordinance 2020-18 on the first of two readings supporting the St. Marcus Police Department's increased use of the site and release process when appropriate, instead of arresting individuals suspected of having committed certain misdemeanor offenses requiring record-keeping and reporting of use of the site and release process in instances in which individuals have been arrested for site and release eligible offenses and providing an effective date.
I'm motion. I have a motion by Ms. Derrick. I'm seeking a second. Did I hear Mr. Rocky Moore?
Yes.
Okay, I see one from Mr. Baker, but I heard Mr. Rocky Moore first, so I'm going to give him the second there. Mr. Lembres, do we have staff report on this? Where, where do we go at this point? I, I've got a bunch of comments myself and some amendments, so I'm seeking how we're going to go through this.
Mayor, we didn't have a prepared report. We'll, we're happy, staff is available in case there's any specific questions. I know that Chief Staff is available, as well as Chief Klett as well. So we didn't have a report, but open to see if y'all have any questions or anything that you want to discuss.
Okay, I see that Mr. Cosentino wants to speak, and since he's our city attorney, I think I'm going to let him go first. And then I see, well, let's use the electronic raise hand, and Mr. Cosentino.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to point the, point the attention of the council to a section in the ordinance that is in your packet today. If you go to section two of the ordinance, I can't tell you what page it's on because I don't have the same packet numbering that you do. But nonetheless, section two of the ordinance is the one that contains the language that says that the council recognizes that there are circumstances when it's not appropriate to use.
You know, for, for the public and council, it's page 475 and continues on 476, I believe, is what you're speaking about.
Right, so, so in that, there's, there's an enumeration of circumstances where the council by this ordinance is recognizing that the use of site and release may not be appropriate. So if I can call your attention to the sub-paragraph number. So if I can call your attention to the sub-paragraph number three, uh, if you're there, you'll see that there's language highlighted in yellow and there's strike through language and there's underline language. And the language as it, as, as it appeared when you last saw this ordinance said, "There is reason to believe that the safety of persons, including the subject, would be imminently endangered by the release of the subject." And then the next sentence read, "In making this assessment, it shall be considered whether the subject has the physical or mental capacity to endanger the safety of themselves or the public." So what, what I have done, and I wanted to point this out to you so it didn't, you know, catch anyone by surprise here, is I, I've added some language here, uh, that said, that changes that to say, uh, "The arresting officer believes that the safety of persons, the subject, would be imminently endangered by the release of the subject." And then the next sentence, "In making this assessment, the arresting officer shall consider whether the subject has physical or mental capacity to endanger the safety of themselves or the public." And so, uh, that is different than what you saw last time, uh, you had your, uh, previous meeting, I believe it was back in, perhaps in March. But in any case, the reason why I've included that is because if this ordinance is adopted, uh, by the council and someone is reviewing the decisions that were made or a particular instance where an officer has made a decision to arrest someone rather than doing, issuing a citation, um, who will be judging that officer's actions? Will it be done with the benefit of twenty twenty hindsight by someone sitting, you know, uh, in a room somewhere? Or perhaps, uh, you know, in a plaintiff lawyer's, uh, office, uh, where someone's considering suing uh, over an arrest that was made instead of being cited and released? Uh, the, the, the use of the passive voice in the previous iteration of this leaves it to interpretation about who's going to be, through whose lens, uh, the reasonableness of the officer's action will be viewed. And so this language that I, that I suggested for inclusion in, in the ordinance is offered to prevent an unintended consequence, that, that there'll be Monday morning quarterbacks coming in after the fact and filing lawsuits against police officers because they view that the officer didn't make the call the way that they might have done it. So that's my recommendation, and I wanted to point that out because that was not in the draft that the criminal justice reform committee saw, and it wasn't in the draft when you saw it last time. So I just wanted to make that clear. Any questions about the suggested modification?
Do we need a motion to include that?
Uh, I think for the sake of the record, it would be good to, to have the motion to confirm that the, whether or not the, the, uh, the approval of the ordinance on first reading includes that or does not include that. So I would suggest a motion to amend because it is different than the last time you saw it.
Okay, so I'm seeking a motion to amend because this certainly makes it more clear who is, um, who is going to be making those decisions in section two, item three.
I would like to move to amend section two, item three, so that the language that our city attorney recommended is implemented.
Okay, is there a second? I hear a second from Ms. Derek. So are there any questions on this item? If not, we will go ahead and vote on this amendment. Ms. Cook?
Yes, Ms. Derek.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Hi.
Dr. Mahalkinen?
Hi.
Mayor Houston?
Hi.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Hi.
Dr. Marquez?
Hi.
Mr. Baker?
Hi.
The motion to amend passes seven to zero.
Okay, and Mr. Cosentino, if you will lower your electronic hand, then I will know the next time that you need to speak, that it's something new. Thank you. Council, this is open for discussion at this point. If, um, Mr. Stapp.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out real quickly because I've noticed that there are actually two versions of the draft ordinance in your packet, or at least on the attachments that I'm seeing. The one that you all just looked at, um, is the correct one. If you see one called final draft, four, seven, and twenty, that was one prior to Mr. Cosentino's update, so just wanna point that out.
That we are looking at that starts on page four seventy-four of the packet is the right one?
The one that, yes, if the one that you're looking at has the, uh, strike throughs that Mr. Cosentino mentioned, you're looking at the right one.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. It's always good to know which one that we need to be looking at. Um, and if you'll electronically remove your hands, then I'll know the next time you want to get in. Uh, Council, I've got a couple of things that I would like to offer. And, uh, what I would like to state is that I support the use of site and release when and where it makes sense as determined by trained, uh, police officers. I've certainly listened to those who support the site and release as the ordinance, as it's presented before us, and I understand a number of their concerns, and I think many in our community support citations in certain cases. However, I've been a policymaker for almost twelve years now, and I spent ten years on boards and commissions recommending policies or decisions. And I've learned to be really concerned about unintended consequences, and I'm concerned that this ordinance may have several. I think we can express our support for site and release, let our officers do their jobs, check the report numbers, and then determine at a later day if we need to take further action. We don't tell our firefighters how to fight fires, our accountants how to keep books, our electric line persons to do what they do. Uh, my concern is I would really prefer to, for council to give, uh, direction uh, in the form of a resolution and, um, instead of the ordinance. But I did learn years ago that even if there's an ordinance that I'm not going to vote for, if it looks like that ordinance will pass, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna offer some amendments to try to make that, uh, ordinance better. I am concerned that we're doing this before the county has completed their work. I understand that there's some things that they're doing that's going to possibly change things on the other end. We just kinda at the beginning. Um, so that's part of my concern is I think that we're doing this a little too soon. And as I said, I'm not gonna support an ordinance, but I would support direction, uh, to our police department to use site and release more than they have been. Um, I would like to offer a couple of amendments, and one of them has to do with the ID. And my apologies for not heck getting this into staff that so you would be able to see it. And what I may do is I'll just explain to you what it is that I'm looking at, and it has to do with the identification. The way it's written now, it appears to me that someone could show a utility bill and you don't even know if that's the person who's handing it to you. My suggestion is that we seek a ID card that has photo identification. And if that photo ID, which could be a student ID, doesn't provide an address in Hays County, that we also require a document such as what's specified here, utility bill, rent bill, or lease that has an address in Hays County, and the name on that document has to match the photo ID. So that's what I'm suggesting here, and if y'all are good with something like that, uh, I'd be happy to work with staff to write that up because my concern is a utility bill without ma- a matching photo ID doesn't really tell you who that person is or that they, the verification that they do live in Hays County. So I'm gonna open that up for, for discussion. Anybody? I'm just trying to tighten up what I think was probably the intent.
Mayor, when you talk about an ID, you're talking about something that's issued by the state?
I'm talking about a photo ID. It could be a student ID. It could be a public school student ID. I don't know if they have IDs, and I'm sorry, don't know if they have photos. I know that a Texas state ID is going to have a photo and it's gonna have a name. So if, uh, and I know a lot of folks don't change their driver's license like they're legally supposed to. They keep their address from wherever they're from, parents' address. So if you've still got an ID that has an address out of town and you've got a utility bill or your lease or something that says you live in Hays County, you've gotta have the photo ID and then the name on the lease needs to match the photo ID. That's what I'm trying to tighten up on this particular item. Otherwise, we don't really know who that is that we're giving a citation to.
I agree.
Citation to somebody. It could be somebody else who's getting that citation, and they're probably not gonna appreciate that. That's when I'm, that's where I'm trying to tighten it up.
Okay. My only concern is what's someone to stop them from going to the flea market and get one of those IDs that doesn't mean anything? And can you improve who that person is? But yes.
That could happen, that could happen today.
Yeah.
Oh, um.
I'm just looking at both sides of, of the coin here. Thank you.
Right, but if we, well.
I'm with you. I just.
I'm just trying to get something better than a utility bill that could have anybody's name on it that somebody might have found in a trash bin or something.
Right, right. I, I like that proposal.
Okay, uh, Dr. Mahalkinen and then Mr. Baker.
Um, I support your suggestion.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Uh, ooh, hit the wrong button there. Long second. Um, no, 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 I, I intentionally had my hand raised, but, um, I was going to say, you know, I, I see the intent there of having a clear form of identification. Um, but we know that ID laws have consistently been a contentious issue for members of the public because they do create a financial barrier. Um, you know, if it was like a social security card and everybody was issued a photo ID for free by the US government or the Texas government, I would support that. Um, but given the range of opportunity that it has to negatively impact lower income members of our community, I think that any form of ID, including a utility bill, should be sufficient. Uh, you know, think, think through the scenario we're maybe trying to describe here where someone is trying to be intentionally misleading and they happen to have a utility bill on hand or in their vehicle. That's a very rare set of circumstances. Um, and, and I, I just don't personally think that it's really all that applicable to the scenarios that officers are running into. And if at any point, as I understand it, if an officer has concern that they are being lied to or intentionally misled, that they could take that person in, that that would still be under their discretion. Um, I believe it was even Officer Savedra in his memo to us that was pointing out the particular, um, statutes surrounding this issue and suggested that what we had written in is already covered by the Texas penal code.
I'm sorry, I lost you on that last sentence, Mr. Baker.
Uh, it, it seemed according to Officer Savedra that what we're suggesting in terms of required forms of identification has already been outlined elsewhere in terms of what somebody has to provide to an officer. And so our site and release ordinance, I think, is able to stand separate from that. I might be incorrect there.
Well, I'm not going to submit this before you tonight because I don't have it presented that I can, can show it to you. So I will check into that, and I will probably still provide this amendment at the next meeting, and we can vote as we need to. Um, I just, well, it would surprise me that folks don't have IDs because you're gonna have to have that to vote. You're gonna have, you, you need an ID for a lot of things, so.
Mayor, unfortunately, you know, it's, it is a point of privilege to have an ID on you, um, to be able to be a part of any of those organizations you outlined, to find the time to go down to get a, a driver's license. Not everybody even drives, right? So, um, I, I think we have to recognize the amount of privilege that we have to even share that perspective.
True, but you gotta know who you're giving the citation to also, and you need some kind of proof. So I'm gonna provide that next time. Y'all can vote as you see fit, but I will look into what it is that you were, um, discussing. Um, another question that I have, and this, this might be for, I don't know if this for Mr. Stapp or for Mr. Cosentino, under the recitals, uh, under item five, uh, and I'll just read the whole thing. "The city council supports SMPD's commitment to increase the use of site and release, the site and release process as part of a combined strategy in cooperation with the Hays County Criminal District Attorney's Office." And this is part I questioned, "To divert eligible individuals from being incarcerated, prosecuted, and convicted in a criminal justice system." Has this been formalized? This is part of what I was talking about with, uh, the county's criminal justice reform efforts. It's the word divert there. Um, has that been defined? I'm not on that other committee, and I don't know the answer to that, so I'm asking. And I see Chief Klett and former Chief Stapp, uh, online, so I welcome whoever wants to answer that. And Chief Klett, you'll need to unmute.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Bob Klett, interim chief of police for San Marcos. Hays County's still working through the process on a divert program. Uh, what this is, is a site and release that we're talking about in the ordinance. Site and reverse is still a, a process that they're working on polishing out, uh, which would be, uh, a different kind of program. So that's, I think, part of their, their concern there is that it's not complete or ready, uh, for everybody to go forward with, with the kind of planning yet.
And that was kinda my point, is that they're, they're not done yet, so, um, there is that. Uh, I also have a question on item six. Um, and it's basically where it says, "The city council deems it necessary to have SMPD gather, report, and publish statistical information to demonstrate trends in the department's use of the site and release process, including the frequency of use, offense type, justification for arrest if an arrest is made." My question there is, is there a legal, uh, implication of using the word justification instead of perhaps the word reason? Um, I'm questioning justification there, uh, just for, I need some explanation, uh, for me. For whoever can answer that.
Mayor, I'll weigh in. I think, I think there the use of the word justification is, is really synonymous with reason. There is a term of justification, uh, as a defense, uh, in the penal code. I don't think that's what we were talking about here. I think, I think it's a synonymous in this context with reason. Why, why did you do, why did you arrest rather than issuing a, a citation?
Okay, I just didn't know if there was a, a legal amount to that. Uh, also for, for the chiefs, um, would you explain to me and the public? We have section one, item two. It talks about possession of marijuana less than four ounces. Um, personally, I had no idea what the volume of that amount of marijuana is, and it's since been explained to me uh, that it's a gallon zipper bag because the marijuana is kinda, I'm gonna call it fluffy. Y'all probably wouldn't call it that, but I would say maybe because it's fluffy. I've not seen a bag, so I don't know. The street value, I understand, is, can be considerable. That doesn't sound like personal use to me. So I'm concerned about the four ounces, and if that perhaps should be something lower if we're talking about personal use. And I'll take anybody responding.
Yes, ma'am. Bob Klett, interim chief. So the, uh, four ounces is definitely well above a personal use amount that, uh, most would consider. Uh, most of times, I think most would consider two ounces or less to be a personal use amount. And in this case, uh, four ounces is what was in the Texas law, so that's, uh, what's in the, the documentation here.
So four ounces is what was in the state law when they, uh, created the site and release process? That kinda surprises me, but, but that's why it's four. Whereas, okay. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, did I have a bag here at the house? Is this considered four ounces more or less? Oh, I guess not to you. I guess the question to the chief.
Don't be, I have to be questioning somebody who's seen a bag of marijuana.
That size bag would generally be about, uh, four ounces.
That's a pretty good size.
A good sized bag.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, you might have been out of the room, but Chief Klett just said the four ounces is what's in the state law. but Chief Clatt just said the four ounces is what's in the state law in regards to site and release.
Have you seen any guidance from the state as to whether, what their intent of that has been or how that's proceeded through the criminal legal system?
The reason I brought this up, I just wanted to make sure the public knows what we're talking about. A lot of people don't have an idea. I didn't have an idea. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly didn't. Um, okay, my next question is in section four.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir?
Yeah, I had asked a question.
I'm sorry, Max, go ahead.
I was curious how we've seen that, that number, that four ounces, translate at the state level and whether we've seen any real issues with that particular number, as it seems to be a pretty consistent focus for a lot of members of our community.
Councilmember Baker, the reason the four ounces is, is the number in state law is because the state law was intending to focus on class, certain class A and B misdemeanors. And in Texas law, possession of marijuana at four ounces is a class A misdemeanor. So it's really tied to the level of offense. I think the point some folks are just trying to make is, is it's well beyond a personal amount, personal use amount.
Okay, but that's what's in the state law. Mr. Cosentino, can we make it less for our current guidelines?
Yes, the, the council could, could shorten the list of offenses that are eligible for site and release, could eliminate some of them. You had quite a bit of discussion about doing so at one of your previous meetings, but the ordinance before you represents the, I guess, the results of your last discussion. But yes, you could, you could take eligible offenses off the list for this ordinance, right? That would still not, doing so would not eliminate the discretion that, that officers already have under the Code of Criminal Procedure. But you could shorten the list, you could change it.
Excuse me, I have a question, or actually.
Mr. Rocky Moore.
For, Mr. Cosentino, could you please repeat what you just said about discretion?
Right, the, the Code of Criminal Procedure that Public Safety Officer Staff just spoke about a moment ago, which has been on the books for quite some time, gives discretion to police officers to decide to issue a citation instead of arresting a person for the list, list of offenses that are included in the statute. So as long as they're a resident of the county where the offense is committed.
So would you say that this ordinance removes officer discretion? As written?
Well, there is the language in section two that we spoke about earlier that, and, and the council has deliberated about in the past, the language of only. That, that, it, it seems like a limitation that the council is directing the police that only in those listed circumstances would it be appropriate for an officer to actually go forward and arrest someone instead of giving them a citation and releasing them. So it was explained at your last meeting that it's a pretty, it's a pretty comprehensive list, but it may not, but, but it, it may not encompass every situation that a police officer might encounter. So it, it, it does limit discretion to that extent that, that if adopted as an ordinance, if it's, if it doesn't fall into those categories, then an officer by this ordinance should be going ahead and, and giving a citation instead of arresting.
So you're saying that there is a limitation to discretion caused by this ordinance and its implementation?
Yes, because of section two's stating that the circumstances under which an officer would go ahead and arrest a person instead of giving them a citation should be only in the listed circumstances.
And that list of circumstances is relatively broad?
Right, I think it was acknowledged at the last meeting that it is pretty comprehensive. So, but there, there could be some outlier situations that, you know, that fall outside of that. But an officer would not, would be in violation of this ordinance, although an officer couldn't be criminally prosecuted for that. An officer would be acting outside of the ordinance if he or she went ahead and arrested an individual in circumstances that didn't meet those exceptions.
Understood, thank you.
So I'm now going to make a motion to amend that in section two, the second paragraph, to remove the word only. And that would be in the sentence that says, "The city council further recognizes that the use of the site and release process may not be appropriate in all cases, and that SMPD officers may find it necessary to arrest a person suspected of having committed any of the above listed offenses only," and that's the word I'm, my motion to amend is to strike, "if any of the following circumstances are present." That's my motion, and I'm seeking a second.
A second?
Second.
Okay, I've got two seconds, but I heard Mr. Mahakinen first, so I'll give him the second. Is there any further discussion on removal of the word only? If not, Ms. Cook, if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Nay.
Dr. Marquez?
Nay.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Ms. Derrick?
No.
Okay. Motion fails four to three.
Motion fails. I have a question for staff on section four, where it's talking about a report. I have a question as to whether the software that we currently have is going to allow capture of the data that we're wanting to report.
Yes, ma'am, Bob. But the, the software we have now can collect the data. It's getting the data back out in an easy way without manual digging through the data is, is the issue for us, but we can't get that data out.
Well, my question is, do you have checkboxes or whatever so that you can get it back out? Because if it's stuff that you just type into a text box, I would not say the software is really allowing us to collect that in a way that we can report it easily.
We are going to have to make some adjustments on the data collection and, and look at the ways to make that happen more accurately. So it's, it's not intuitive in the software. It's going to be having to adjust it.
So can it be done, and we just aren't there yet, or we're not sure if it can be done?
Yes, ma'am, it can be done.
Okay, and we have not done that yet, correct? When will we, when can we expect that that will be complete?
Once we get the final word of what else is desired. We didn't want to make changes and then have it changed later on because that becomes more confusing. So once we get what the final definitions are that we need to adjust code tables and other adjustments, then we will implement that. We are, we have implemented other changes for tracking our street diversion so far. We'll find ways to do that with our software as well.
Great, thank you so much. And I will just, I'm glad you mentioned street diversion because I'm concerned that if this passes and the is in, that we may not see as many street diversions. And that's just a comment that I'm going to make. In section five, where it talks about the police chief's advisory panel, at the very end, it says, "These meetings shall be open to public participation." I'm going to make an amendment to add "by including a citizen comment agenda item." So that it would read, "These meetings shall be open to public participation by including a citizen comment agenda item." And that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. That's a second, Ms. Derrick. Is there, are there any questions? That's just for clarity that there would be a citizen comment agenda item, and that's where those comments would happen. Mr. Rocky Moore?
Could you repeat the motion again? I couldn't hear it.
I will. Section five talks about the police advise, this paragraph two talks about the police advisory panel. I'm sorry, the police chief's advisory panel. And it says, "The meeting shall be open to public participation." My amendment is to add, "By including a citizen comment agenda item."
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Ms. Cook, would you call the roll on this particular item?
Dr. Mahakinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Marquez?
Aye.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Derrick?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. I think this is the first ordinance that I have ever been asked to vote on that wasn't written by staff. There's a number of things that if I had time and other folks, other input, that I would probably word differently, even if this is going to pass. But I'm going to let that go for today. Are there any other concerns, questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
I wanted to kind of address some of the overall tone we've heard in regards to this. First and foremost, you know, we had a lot of people during the citizen comment period write in, but 15 is only a fraction of the amount of voices that we heard. At my count, we had almost 70. I think it would be really great for staff next time to go through and for future contentious items like these, give us a count of yays and nays so that we have a general idea when we see this kind of public outcry, especially as we're limiting the public's ability to come out and protest. I had a couple people joke that they wish they could hold up signs behind me here in my room, right? So that's one issue. But the most important thing I wanted to focus on was something that you honed in on, which was that justification clause. In an email dated to us on April 3rd from Officer Savedra, who is the president of the San Marcos Police Officers Association, he said, "Nothing short of, 'The San Marcos Police Officers Association will advise site and release for all to avoid being accused and potentially facing legal action.'" So a lot of the concerns that we've heard from the community have focused on this limiting of officers discretion. But what I take Mr. Savedra's statement to mean is that he will force all officers to abandon their discretion and write citations for every citation-eligible offense. And as you alluded to, that's a big concern for us considering they currently already have the opportunity to not bring the legal process in at all. For someone with four ounces of marijuana, they could potentially just have that person pour it out and destroy it, as we've heard anecdotal evidence from other officers before. So to do a little background, just to, again, make it clear to why the public, why we're focusing on this so much, is that when members of our community reached out and collected data that the, you know, that was kind of hard to piece together, we saw that people of color were over-arrested when they could have been granted a citation. And in addition to that, we've seen that counties all across the area are, are struggling with full jails. So that was the main impetus for this site and release discussion. You know, there are lots and lots of comments that we've kind of heard throughout this dialogue. You know, stuff about, oh, a lot of people in the community, for instance, support a resolution over an ordinance, right? We saw that in so many of these. Oh, well, don't take away officers' discretion, grant them a resolution, they'll do the right thing. But as we just heard, that might also make it more difficult for officers to effectively implement those changes because if they're waiting for changes, they could come to the changes that just came, then that can make it kind of confusing for them. So I think that's where we're better positioned as a city to stick with an ordinance as opposed to a resolution, which might create more shifting ground for those officers in the long run. The other big myth that I wanted to kind of just or address was several of the emails we received referred to the Seattle is Dying video, which to my logic and recollection largely refers to homelessness and some of the issues that people are seeing around that. So I, I would encourage you to, you know, the public to, to look at that and really consider how that fits into the site and release conversation that we're having today. Now, some people have described this as a handout. Some people think that this is going to lead to people committing crime after crime after crime on some spree. And I have to say that these are the, the delusions and frankly, imaginations run wild. I, I don't think that there's any real data or even anecdotal evidence of that. And to be clear, if someone creates a citation or commits a citation-eligible offense, they receive that citation, they sign off right then and there talking about how important it is to show up for their day and that they promised to do so. And, and I, I think that it just, it just shows that there are other means to deal with this than throwing somebody in jail. I have kind of a huge laundry list of, of issues that were brought up. You know, another really big contentious point that we've heard over and over again is this concern that people that receive a citation will not show up to their day in court. I have read several articles that have suggested that part of the reason that we see such a low return rate, somewhere around 40%, is because of the antiquated system that we currently use. You know, think about how many college students were servicing in this town that changed leases every six months and might not update their driver's license on top of that. So that could lead to them missing the mail-out snail mail as opposed to what other cities have done, which is utilize things like text messages. Also, when we focus in on that 40% number, it's important to recognize the difference between when someone uses a number as opposed to when they give you a percentage. So when I pressed for more information on this from, sorry, from, from Mr. Staff, he gave me some numbers from February and indicated that of the seven that we, that were citation-eligible, three of them did not show up. Now, that's 43%, and that sounds real scary, but we're talking about three people. So I think it's really important when we kind of suss out this data and we understand what we're really trying to achieve here. And this is the last point that I want to leave you with. You know, I think one of the most striking comments that was made to me by a citizen who opposes this legislation was that she basically feels like if we pass this as a council, we don't care about her family. And I want to just say that if your family has been wrongfully arrested, unnecessarily jailed, or impacted by the criminal legal system, then you would see how important this is for families. If you haven't experienced this, consider yourself privileged. Anybody that does not see the inherent issues in our criminal legal system frankly, has not experienced it or probably doesn't know somebody that has experienced it and has been seriously impacted, families, wives, children, the gambit, right? So I think it's incredibly important that when we think about the questions of restitution and, and the purpose of our legal system, we need to recognize that the criminal legal system is in large part set up and funds itself. And so we need to recognize that and make sure that we're doing what's right for our citizens and not necessarily comes from what is essentially a special interest group. Private prisons and police officers associations have every reason to, to work together. And, and there have been so many comments made that, you know, our police officers are doing great, and I've had fantastic experiences with officers. I've even been pulled over by some of them here in San Marcos. But the reality is, the numbers show that some of the members of our community are being disenfranchised, and the purpose of this ordinance is to help take care of more people and save more families long-term tragedy. Thank you so much, sorry to hog that time.
And I'm going to go to Mr. Rocky Moore in a moment, and then Ms. Derrick. While we can, I think, respectfully disagree on a few things that you had, Mr. Baker, I would take exception to saying that we have cut off the opportunity for people to come discuss as if that was a decision that we made. We're, we're under a public health emergency, and that's why we're meeting virtually. And even at the last meeting, when I was suggesting, or in a conversation, when I was suggesting perhaps we should not do this today simply because we are meeting virtually, even someone who is supporting this ordinance on the council says, "We, we've heard from people, we've heard from them multiple times, and we, and we need to move on." So I just don't want to leave that out there, that, that we have cut off people from commenting because that opportunity was here, and it's because of the public health crisis that we don't have people in our lobby.
Right, that, that wasn't my point. My point was that while we're in a public health crisis, it, that it would be helpful with a larger agenda item like this, particularly since it's coming up for a second reading, to have staff calculate a yays and nays so that that could have the physical presence that, you know, a full lobby would.
Well, we can do that, or we can each do it. I've got two folders, I've got a support and oppose, and we need to make sure, as you talk about numbers. And we need to make sure, as you talk about numbers, we need to make sure we don't double and triple count because we heard from some folks multiple times. So it shouldn't be by the letters or the emails. It should be by the number of people, I would think, assuming that person keeps a consistent position, which I haven't noticed anybody changing their position on this. So I think that we can do that. Mr. Rocky Moore and then Ms. Derrick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Baker for his comprehensive addressing some of the issues that we've seen and heard in the citizen comments and in the emails that we've been receiving. We have been receiving a lot of emails, particularly in the last couple of days. And it's unfortunate that there have been some statements that have been made that have caused people to think that we were removing officers discretion to the point where they would be hamstrung. And that is not the case with this ordinance. It is not the case at all. As our city lawyer just said a little bit, there would be some potential limitations that officers could come up against during their carrying out of their duty. But overall, this is a very, very broad and comprehensive addressing of a lot of the issues that people want to see addressed. And we've been at this for nine months. Something that people have brought up in some of the emails that we've seen have been surrounding the fact that we shouldn't move so fast, that we should take our time, we should discuss these issues in more detail, when we have actually discussed these issues in quite a bit of detail. And we've done so with the city, with the police chiefs. We've done so with the community. We've had a long and extensive journey to get to the point that we're at today. And there are some issues. In fact, when we began this, it seemed that we were gonna be behind the county because they were moving so fast with site and release, site and divert. But at some point, it seems like the effort stalled at the county level. And I remember being told by a member of the Commissioner's Court at one point that perhaps they would be ready to move on site and divert in February. It is now April, and they have not moved on that yet. I don't know what their schedule is. Perhaps one of the chiefs can speak to that when they're gonna meet about it next. But I don't believe that anything that we're doing is going to be affected by the county's work at all since everything that we're doing is aligned with what the state has already prescribed in regards to site and release. As far as technology is concerned, as Councilmember Baker mentioned, we would like to move toward being able to send people texts to remind them of when they have to show up at court. But it seems that we have been kind of moved back a bit in our schedule as far as bringing that online because of technical issues in the software that we use. But as far as I'm aware, we are moving toward that. And one of our chiefs can probably talk to that as well. And finally, this is a public health emergency. And Chief Klett, the last time we spoke to him about this, mentioned that site and release has already been emphasized to the officer as something that needs to be done now in order to keep people from going to jail when they don't have to, and also to keep that contact between officers and inmates and police officers and people who may be pulled over or considered for arrest from having that close contact. So this is already something that's been happening. This is already something that we were moving toward, which we were reminded of over and over again during this entire process. Our police department was already moving toward making sure that this was going to be done in this manner. What we're doing right now is providing a context and a support for what our officers and what our county were already doing. So I'm appreciative of all the work that's been put in by our officers, by our city staff, by our county, and also at the highest level by the state for providing guidelines that we are working within right now in order to be certain that everybody in our city has equal access to the same privileges, in this instance, to being cited and released. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Derrick? Ms. Derrick, you're on mute. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to state my opinion, why I am in support of this, is that we're in the midst of a paradigm change right now in the way that we look at law enforcement and jails and the commercialization of jails. And this has been, we've been able to have site and release since 2007. Our numbers aren't great. For the past year, Chief Klett's been working with us, and he says, you know, I want this to happen, you know, yet the needle has still not moved. And I just feel like that if we put this in ordinance form, it gets whoever the chief of police is, the leverage needed to get compliance and a full understanding from all of San Marcos police officers, that the, this is what is expected. It's in the ordinance. We're moving forward now. This is gonna be a different world. We're gonna start here, and then you guys get the information systems intact to be able to report it. We'll move on to diversion. I mean, this is just the first step of many steps. And being a policymaker, I know that people don't like change, and this is change. And people are gonna buck against it. It will always happen. But when I read Section Two, "The city council recognizes that the use of site and release process may not be appropriate in all circumstances, and that SMPD officers may exercise their discretion to issue a written or verbal warning in lieu of issuing a citation or making an arrest for a person suspected of committing any offense listed in Section One." That's from the ordinance. And then I hear from, from Police Officers Association and other police officers that say that they're going to advise, instead of doing the, what they already have the right to do, which is to give a verbal warning or ask somebody to dump it out, that they're just gonna default to citation because it's gonna protect themselves. That seems to me more like a threat. That seems to me like pushing back on change. And I'm sorry, I know change is hard, but I think that this is the change that's well worth it. And I think that once everybody gets on board with it, they'll understand. But I think there's, you know, it's always tough to make these huge changes, and I'm willing to do it. And I want to thank Criminal Justice Reform, San Marcos Police Department, everyone who had a hand in getting us to where we are today. I think it's the right direction to go. Thank you.
Baker?
Yes, Mayor. You know, one last point I wanted to make, and it's a comment that you had made and something that we've also seen in a lot of those emails, referring to this idea that, you know, we're policymakers and we don't tell people how to do their jobs. But frankly, that is a large part of what we do. That's what organizations like OSHA are for. That's what, you know, organizations that make sure that we're not violating, you know, spending clauses and things like that. There are lots of opportunities where government has stepped in and told people how to do their jobs for the safety of the community, for the benefit of the community. And I see this to be another example of that. You know, we're, as I said, and as I feel, I don't think that we're really taking officers discretion away, except for maybe a few marginal cases where they might cite someone who they would have, they would have preferred to arrest. But again, I think that, as I pointed out in that email, and I would appreciate a response from Officer Klett here in regards to this issue, because it's very concerning to me. The San Marcos Police Officers Association is a function of the police department, and I might not understand the organization very well. But if the president of that organization is telling all of its members, who are our, you know, our police force, not to follow our ordinance, what position will that put us in? And how do you, as one of, as the interim currently and as somebody looking, I believe, to apply for the job, how do you plan to guide us through that?
So I want to be very clear, Buck Klett, interim chief, I want to be very clear that I set the policy of the department. However, the POA, as its own separate entity of the department, is looking out for the best interests of the officers. In this case, because of the way the ordinance is written, in part in Number Two, it talks about you should only use site and release only in these certain circumstances. Although it later on says that an officer can't be held criminally liable, this does open them up to some federal civil rights violations if for whatever reason they make a decision that is not deemed by somebody else to be in line with the rules. And so as the organization protecting the officers, their legal advice is that protect yourself from civil tort reform because they are individually accountable to that, not the city, not the police department. They are, and I think they have very real concerns about that. I want to stand by these officers and the decisions they make. We had some bad information out in the press quite a bit about our racial disparity in 2018. We cleared those numbers up. The officers make really good decisions every day. I think one of the questions a while ago, and there was a bunch of questions that I didn't get a chance to answer, where Hays County is in all this. The big impetus for Hays County to begin their process was in jail overcrowding. They've done a significant amount of work to solve that problem with jail overcrowding, where misdemeanors, anybody facing these kind of things are released that very next morning. There was talk about how we go forward, and I think Mr. Baker was right about in the February timeframe, because there were some decisions coming up about near twenty-four hour magistration. It was gonna define some of their thought processes. The DA's office has been working on their deferment program. Those things have all been going on. Some of the main things that Hays County started on their issues with have been solved. They're working on finding, tuning the rest of that. They did have a meeting planned for the end of March, but we came under the public health crisis, and they've had to defer that meeting for now. We are moving the needle. When we saw the 2018 stats, we started talking about that, and it was roughly around October when we started hearing from the community, some of the community that this was a concern of theirs, and so we started talking about it. Our numbers went up for 2019, not tremendously, but again, that was the end of the year. This year so far already, we're already seeing increased use of site and release. And now that we're in the pandemic, we're certainly making those changes because of the public health crisis. And I think you'll see officers are very good at making their decisions. When we talk about discretion being taken away, the ordinance does say you can go less with a warning, but the ordinance very well says that you can't do these other things, especially when you know from being the boots on the ground, talking to the victims, or in that individual circumstance, this is, this would be more appropriate for an arrest, which you can't cover in the four corners of the document. And I think that's some of the different, I think, different questions I heard out there that I wanted to kind of address. I might have missed some of those, and I apologize.
Is there, and Chief Klett, my apologies if you feel like I didn't give you a chance to answer all of those at any time, always. Just let me know if you've got more to add, because that certainly wasn't intentional on my part. I see Mr. Rocky Moore's electronic hand raised. Is that a new one, or is that leftover? Mr. Rocky Moore?
It's a new one. I just wanted to ask Chief Klett a question about something else that Officer Savedra wrote in his message to us. He spoke about the department not having the equipment in place to produce quality results, implying that you cannot do the job at hand currently with what you have in place in regards to reporting. That the case?
That is somewhat the case. We've been working, as we've talked about in the Criminal Justice Reform Committee, there are limitations in the software we have. We've had that software since 2001, and it's not as maybe polished or advanced as some of the other software that's out there. We started a process of looking at some of the other vendors to see what might be available that's out there. Some of the software we look at is pretty promising looking. We've not been able to finish that because of the pandemic and not being able to meet in a group with the vendors. And then additionally, we were looking at the electronic ticket writing software that we were hoping to implement that we discussed, that would help with the text notifications for all of our different violations. That company fell through. That didn't really fit the needs of the city with some of the other issues that might be there. So the current vendor we do have right now doesn't have that, and that's some of the limitations of the software, that we don't have the staff to do those text notifications. I think that's, you know, in all of our discussions before, I never thought about the Bell Bonds Company because that's way beyond what we do. They talked about how they do those notifications, and they have much better luck when they're notifying people to get them to show up to court. But again, that's beyond what we do as a city type function.
And we have no timeline for any of that either, do we?
Software implementation takes a long time. It's very expensive. One of the options that we're looking at is the same software that Hays County is moving over to. Again, we would have to do our own due diligence. But even that process of moving from where we're at now to new software, I'm hearing, can take about eighteen months. So it's just implementation and moving all the data, verifying the data, making sure that it's all consistent as we move forward is a big part of the, a big part of the process.
Thank you, Chief Klett.
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
I wanted to go back to that point concerning the civil liabilities, Officer Klett. Don't they currently face those same considerations for making an arrest already? Couldn't they, don't they face that same liability for an arrest currently made?
So there's always civil liability based on how you make an arrest. We make our arrests based on the probable cause. It's within the penal code or the health and safety code, the traffic code. Those things are all very spelled out, and that's where officer discretion comes from. I think the concern is when the ordinance, and Mr. Costantino can probably answer to this better, but when the, when there's an ordinance, it does kind of change things up a little bit about whose definition is it of the reasonableness, whose definition is it that this was a valid arrest or not?
Mr. Costantino, do you have anything to add?
Right, the, the fact that it's an ordinance relates to an officer's defense in a civil rights case about whether the officer had, it goes to the question of whether the officer has immunity for exercising the powers of his or her office in good faith. And so when an, if an officer in making an arrest violates a law that's clearly established at the time, then that undermines a good faith immunity defense. The, having said that, the amendment that the council voted on earlier tonight that I recommended is an attempt to minimize, to the extent possible, but not eliminate the possibility of an officer being sued for making a decision to make an arrest instead of issuing a citation, where, to eliminate the possibility that someone else will judge that and say the officer made the wrong call. Having said that, that's not a complete guarantee that the, that there won't be a lawsuit brought. But, but yeah, having an ordinance versus a resolution is significant in terms of whether or not an officer is going to have a good faith immunity defense for a civil rights violation. And so it is, it is important in that context, whether an ordinance is adopted versus a resolution. So I have to say that in all fairness, that it is, it is important for that purpose.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
I'm sorry, my hand was still up.
Okay, we're getting used to all that, aren't we? Ms. Derrick?
I just had one more question for interim chief Klett. Hi, thank you so much. What I'm trying to get an understanding of is when I said before that in Section Two, we obviously, the ordinance says that, that the council recognizes that the use of site and release may not be appropriate. You could still do, you know, diversion or whatever, you know, the case may be. So why, I mean, help me understand why they wouldn't do that and would revert to just using citations only. What legal implications are they worried about?
So I think that's a very good question, because anytime, you know, when we're talking about the information that we track, how it's presented, they're very cognizant of how that looks with the numbers of, when you look at male, female, race, those kind of questions. I think there's real concern, and you know, if we're gonna be questioned very intimately in this ordinance by the local entity instead of a jury, a court, a judge, then, you know, where does that line? a judge, then, you know, where does that line fit? And we want to make sure that we're going to be as exact as possible, so that we don't raise that, that's, that specter. You know, when we have a penal code violation or something like that, those decisions are are judged by a court, a judge. And in this case, the decision making about whether this was legitimate arrest or not, or citation or not, is going to come down to other people's opinions outside of a court and that due process that happens in that kind of situation.
So what do they have to fear by letting someone go?
The optics of, I let too many white people go versus too many Hispanic people go. And so if I just issue citations to everybody, there's never going to be a question about what kind of bias I might have had or anything else. And this way, because this is being so closely watched, it's just safer for me to not be sued, to not be brought up in the media about my statistics on why I gave this one particular person a warning versus why I gave this person a citation, or or some.
Okay, do you think that would change if we took the "only" out?
I think the "only" helps a lot. I think "only" is such a defining word, that it doesn't allow some of those nuances. When we're trying to stay within those six characters of when we should cite versus arrest, it really changes a lot of the definition so critically. And I think that's a part of what Mr. Costantino, or some of the other people were saying earlier, is that it's such a short little word, but it has such a huge impact in our world.
Yeah. So in your opinion, do you think if "only" was taken out, that they would feel comfortable doing the releasing people and that sort of thing?
I believe that's going to help out quite a bit. I think the fact that there's still an ordinance still causes some people to be concerned rightly about that that federal lawsuit. I mean, that's, that's a very uncomfortable thing to know that you're out there, hung out there by yourself, and the city won't be able to back you up on that because you're sued individually in federal court.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, to that point, you said that the city wouldn't be able to back up an officer, assuming they were facing some sort of litigation. Would would the San Marcos Police Officers Association not be allowed or able to give us the information, the data that we're tracking so closely, so that the city could support an officer that was facing an issue like that, if we did believe that they were within their legal right to arrest?
I might defer to Mr. Costantino on that.
Mayor, would you allow me to address the question?
Yes, please.
All right. So the way it works is that the city has liability for unlawful seizures of individuals. And an arrest is that, right? You're taking someone's liberty away. If the city has a policy or practice of, that encourages or authorizes individuals to be seized, to be arrested, to be deprived of their liberty, without, without adequate legal justification. So when you adopt an ordinance that that says that an officer shall not, or or shall only arrest someone for the listed offenses, if a set of circumstances exists, and only in those circumstances, and then an officer goes ahead and makes an arrest outside of those listed circumstances, then, at that point, when when a lawsuit comes, assuming that it names both the city and the officer as a defendant, the city's defense to the lawsuit is, wait, we have a policy against that. We have a, we have an ordinance adopted by the city council that says an officer shall not arrest someone, except in these circumstances. So there is no way for the city to actually back up the officer in that situation. The response from the city to the lawsuit is, you violated a city ordinance. You're on your own. And that is the significance of doing this as an ordinance versus a resolution. The, and then the officer, at the same time, loses a very valuable defense in a civil rights case of of good faith immunity, or qualified immunity, because in that case, he or she has violated a law that's clearly established, a city ordinance that says, don't make an arrest unless these circumstances exist. So it's that outlier situation that we talked about earlier, that creates a situation where the officer has perhaps a liability that wouldn't otherwise exist. And, and that's the significance. And I have to agree with the interim Chief Clutt, that that the word "only" is is part of the reason why what I just talked about would result from this ordinance.
Ms. Derek, your hand is still up. Okay. Anyone else? I don't see.
I'd like to propose an amendment.
Please go ahead.
That we strike "only" from the ordinance and go ahead as an ordinance.
And the word "only," we need to, I'll set my paperwork aside.
My intention with this is that I want for people to still continue to be released. I want the officers to feel that that's under their purview, within their discretion, won't cause them to to be involved in a lawsuit. It seems like it takes care of a lot of the concerns that they have over the things that concern me the most.
Okay. And Ms. Derek, to be clear for everyone, we're talking about in section two.
Yes.
That's a very long sentence, and it has the word "only." Is this the same motion I made earlier that failed?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just about to say that.
Okay.
But I have the information now, thanks to Chief, to Chief Clutt.
Well, I didn't have the legal part, but that's where I was going with it. But this is fine. Is there other conversation about removing, striking the word "only" in section two, the second paragraph? If not?
Sorry, just just collecting my thoughts real quick. You know, thinking about the power of that word, and the amount of discussion that has surrounded it, you know, I know the motion was just made, but I would encourage my colleagues to really think about how effective this document as an ordinance will be without phrasing that requires the limited scope of guided discretion we were aiming for. So I firmly believe that that word "only" is what is frankly, the only thing that is going to make us gain real traction on this issue. And I will not support a change to remove it.
I agree.
Okay. So Ms. Cook, if you would, if there are no other comments, then look like it. I don't see any electronic hands raised. Ms. Cook, if you go around with a roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Mahalkinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Nay.
Dr. Marquez? Okay. Mr. Baker?
No.
Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
The motion passes four to zero. I mean, four to three. I'm sorry. So sorry, four to three.
Okay, counsel, are there any other amendments? I would just like to say, before we vote on this, and we're going to call the vote and close discussion at this point in time, is that this is exactly what I'm concerned about, is the unintended consequences of what we have. I would fully support a resolution that says to our police department, we want you to use site and release, you know, as much as you can, leaving them with their discretion to make that determination. But as much as I would like to see site and release, I will vote against an ordinance, this particular ordinance. But Dr. Mahalkinen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this very brief. I have worked with this, along with my colleague, Councilmember Rocky Moore, going back last summer. We have discussed for a lot of time, the issue between ordinance and resolution. Even though the state law allowing us to do this goes back to 2000. It seems to me, we would still be the first municipality in the state of Texas to pass this as an ordinance. And it seems to me, if it had been that many years, the state ordinance, and no city had passed it following the state possibilities, I'm not comfortable for us being the great experiment. I totally support this document as a resolution. I think it would give us a year to review things, and then we can see what we need to do for any changes to help our community. So that's why I'm voting no on this, even though I do support it as a resolution.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Gonzalez, do I see you pressing an unmute button, or?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm voting no for the following reasons. And what I stated last time in the last meeting we had, and I do support it as a resolution and policy for San Marcos Police Department. But for the ordinance, I'll be voting no on it. Thank you.
Okay. And just to be clear, Mr. Costantino, this is our first vote on the ordinance, correct? The last time we looked at this, it was for discussion, and we were not voting on the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
This is our first reading. There will be a second reading, at which time I will be, I will be submitting an amendment for the ID portion. I realize some people may vote against it, but I'm going to try to make that a little more definitive. Okay. Ms. Cook, let's do a roll call vote.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
Ms., Dr. Marquez? Mr. Baker? Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Gonzalez, you're on mute.
No.
Dr. Mahalkinen?
No.
Mayor Houston?
No.
The motion to approve passes four to three.
Hey, so we are now, Ms. Cook, am I correct in saying we have concluded through item 23?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Okay, counsel, we did not conclude our executive session earlier today. My question to you is, it's 10:24. Do you want to conclude that this evening? We are agendized for that, or would you rather that we conclude that on another day?
I'd rather it be another day.
I hear one, another day?
Another day, another day.
Another day.
Another day as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
The technical difficulties were this way late into the night.
That's why I'm asking.
Maybe 11 o'clock.
I was hoping, I was hoping that's where we would go. So, Ms. Ms. Cook, tell us what we need to do. I guess you need to read that, and we're going to postpone it, or?
I need to read. Yeah, we can postpone that. So number 24 is executive session in accordance with the following government code sections. A, section 551.074, personnel matters should discuss the appointee review process. In section 551.071, consultation with an attorney to seek legal advice concerning a request for consideration by counsel of an anti-discrimination ordinance.
Okay, I'm seeking a motion to, actually, we completed A, and I will report back on that, and item 25. So I'm seeking a motion to postpone 24B.
Amendment.
Okay, I think I heard Ms. Derek seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Does that work for everybody?
That works. Thank you.
Okay. So that's a motion to postpone. Ms. Cook, if you will, go around the table, please.
Dr. Marquez?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Derek?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Dr. Mahalkinen?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Rocky Moore?
Aye.
The motion is seven to zero. We will push that to another meeting.
Okay. And Ms. Cook, you would read item 25 for us, counsel. Don't give it up yet, because we've got, I've got a report on this one, and we've got to formally adjourn.
Yes. Consider action by motion regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and or regular meeting. Section 551.074, personnel matters, appointee review process. In section 551.071, consultation with an attorney to discuss legal considerations of anti-discrimination ordinance.
Okay. I will report to the public that item A, we set the schedule for our annual review of our four appointees, the city manager, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the municipal court judge. And item B, as you just heard, in 24B, we have postponed that to a future date. And, Ms. Cook, are we now ready for adjournment?
We are, yes, ma'am.
I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Amendment.
Motion by Ms. Derek, seconded by, I'll give that one to Mr. Baker. I'm just going to say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Let the record show that was unanimous. Is that okay, Ms. Cook?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And our meeting is, good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
A lot of bad timing, y'all.